Call the meeting to order. Let's salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under God, in the name of the Lord, and no belief in justice. Alec, could you read in the certification compliance, please?
The timetable of this meeting is published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bones according to the office of the township for late one of these 48 hours ahead. The public has the right to contest, and the contents of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the open public meeting act.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Brownberger, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Hibbertson, Mr. Plaizoff, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Reddick, Mr. Paulin, Mrs. Grappelous, here, and Mr. Katole.
Okay, confirmation recording status? It's on, okay. Swearing of professionals?
State your name for the record, please. Please swear affirm testimony, you hear that this meeting will be the truthful session of the conference. And, Mr. Chairman, if you can just ask everybody to keep their ...
Everybody in the audience, please be quiet, we cannot hear. We have any resolutions?
We have a resolution, we also have a discussion about an area in need of rehabilitation. I would recommend that we take item number five, that discussion first, as the township attorney and manager of the year, Matt.
So, number five.
Number five is a discussion regarding designation of an area in need of rehabilitation on East County Line Road. Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Harold Hensel, one of the township attorneys with the firm of Seek Here &amp; Hensel. I'm here with Tom Henshaw this evening to address the item that appears before you. There's been a referral to the planning board pursuant to statute for its review and comment concerning a proposal to have a designation of an area on East County Line Road as an area in need of rehabilitation. I just wanted to come this evening for a couple minutes and explain that to you. You all have in your packets the report, I believe, that was done by Timothy Mickel. This matter came to the township committee initially by way of a referral from the Lakewood Development Corporation that said, "There's an area along East County Line Road that we believe is in need of rehabilitation." Not redevelopment, but rehabilitation, under the appropriate statutes. The -- I'll voice Mr. Jackson for a second. The township committee took that, requested and had prepared a report from Timothy Mickel, who is a professional planner, an independent professional planner, came in, reviewed the request that was made by Lakewood Development Corporation. The township committee then adopted a resolution sending to you, the planning board pursuant to statute, for your review and comment. The statute basically indicates that an area can be deemed in need of rehabilitation if there are several criteria, I believe six. The planner did find that, in fact, this area meets one of the criteria, that being that more than 50 percent of the residential housing stock is older than 50 years old. He found that to exist in the area that was requested to be determined to be in need of rehabilitation. As a result, he recommended that that matter be examined by the planning board. It's been sent to you for, obviously, your review. I should explain that the difference, because there may be some misconceptions. This is not to be deemed an area in need of redevelopment, but rather rehabilitation. Rehabilitation means, according to the ordinance that Lakewood Township has in place, it affords the opportunity of commercial and industrial property owners to seek a five-year tax abatement if they do improvements to their property. The object of the statute that provides for this declaration or determination of an area being in need of rehabilitation is to afford those property owners an opportunity to receive a tax abatement. The tax abatement goes to the improvements that they make on the parcel and basically says, "In the first year, they're not going to pay an additional tax on the improvements that are done. In the year after that, it's taxed at 20 percent, and it goes on for five years, 20, 40, 60, 80. After five, it's assessed at a full 100 percent value." The purpose of it is to encourage the redevelopment of commercial properties. That was the finding, that the stretch of this area of Route 88 was in need of rehabilitation. If there is a determination made and an ordinance adopted by the township committee that the area is in need of rehabilitation, an individual can make application for a tax abatement. That is all they can do. The township has no authority to exercise eminent domain and condemn any of the properties. That's a whole different section. That's not what's being proposed here. Simply what's being proposed is affording the opportunity of commercial property owners to seek a five-year tax abatement if, in fact, the declaration is made that this is an area of need of rehabilitation. That's how the statute works, that's why we come before the board for its consideration and recommendations to the township committee. Mr. Henshaw is here, who was instrumental in shepherding this for a moment, and I don't know if, I don't think we have any questions for him, but you can see the map that was provided in the packet from the planner that defines the area that's being discussed.
Excuse me, Mr. Hensel, can you please just explain the board's function in this process? I know we sent notices out, members of the public, and you're on behalf of this, so if you could just outline the board's role in this.
It is, yes, I can. It is an advisory role that the planning board takes, similar to what's done with zoning ordinance, requested modifications. The statute specifically that speaks to this indicates that prior to adoption of a resolution, and I think I may have said ordinance, it is a resolution by the township committee, the municipal planning board is to review the matter. Within 45 days of its receipt of a proposed resolution, the planning board submits its recommendations regarding the proposed resolution, including any modifications which it may recommend to the governing body for its consideration. After 45 days, the planning board doesn't submit recommendations. The governing body may adopt the resolution with or without modifications. So, that's essentially, that's from NJSA 40A:12A-14. As I said, it's an advisory position that the planning board takes in this, similar to when zoning ordinance amendments are done.
To be clear, if we agree with this ordinance, there will be no more building, more commercial building than what's allowed right now?
It does not affect what's allowed or not allowed. It really only goes to the opportunity for someone to seek a tax abatement.
Tax abatement.
Yeah. It has no other effect. The zoning stays the same, the zoning doesn't change, it doesn't affect ...
No change in zoning, no increase in any commercial properties?
Not at all. If it's commercial and can be developed and someone wants to come along and do that, they certainly can, but the idea of the abatement is to encourage the rehabilitation, because it's part of the statute that allows for rehabbing of areas that are in need of it. One of the criteria that the planner found was, "You've got houses that are older than 50 years old, it's starting to get run down, let's encourage people, let's encourage commercial property owners to fix up their property, to make it a more palatable area, if you will."
The only question is, if we do encourage to have more commercial properties over there, if we do encourage to have more commercial properties?
I don't believe it encourages or discourages anything. It really affords an opportunity of the current property owners to seek a tax abatement.
Okay, so just to be clear, so I'm here over the building.
It's not on.
It's louder.
Hello? Yes?
Can you hear?
Just speak now.
I'm using state, so state is word better.
What?
So, just to be clear for myself, by designating an area for rehabilitation, it doesn't, there are no zoning implications in terms of, it doesn't allow for any residential property owners for higher density residential properties, it doesn't allow for higher density on commercial properties. In other words, what we're doing is, we're saying that properties that are currently zoned for commercial use, right? Currently zoned for commercial use, those property owners, if they improve their properties, that improvement, that improvement can qualify for a tax abatement. That's all that we're doing. In other words, we're not saying that those commercial, those commercial properties can be developed for, well, besides for other uses, we're not saying that now you can develop more commercial property on your property, we're not saying that residential property owners can now develop higher density residential. All we're saying is that existing commercial properties, if there are improvements on those properties, according to the current zoning standards, they may qualify for a tax abatement. Is that what we're saying?
That is absolutely correct. That is absolutely correct. It does not affect the zoning, it does not affect the use of the property. It affords an opportunity for, it encourages fixing up a property, basically, and that's the idea of, it's rehabilitation, it's not redevelopment, and that distinction should be made. Redevelopment requires adopting a redevelopment plan, when things like the Cedar Bridge redevelopment area, that's a redevelopment plan that was done many, many years ago. That's not this. This is simply rehabilitation to afford, give somebody an incentive to fix up their place that's starting to get run down, basically. That's what it's doing. It does not affect zoning, it is not an overlay, it does not overlay the zoning that's there. The zoning that's there stays there. The only effect, and the effect is, by way of ordinance in Lakewood Township, there is a provision that allows for tax abatement if an area is determined to be in need of rehabilitation, and that's all it does at this point. That's by state statute and by the local ordinance, which defines how to make an application to qualify for an abatement. That's all it does. And it's only a five-year, it's not the long-term pilots or anything like that.
And just to be clear of the area that we're talking about, we're talking about County Line Road, east of Madison Avenue, all the way to Ridge Road?
Ridge.
All the way to Ridge, okay. So, in other words, not, 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 not the East County, I mean, it's the lanes mill, just County Line Road, east of Madison Avenue, off to Ridge Avenue.
It looks like it goes even a little bit beyond Ridge to Red Oak Drive, I believe. If you look at the map that's attached to the report, it does. There are two little sections that are cut out of it, apparently, in a separate zone that are not affected, probably because there's no commercial in those areas, but that is it. It does run from Route 9, Route 9, if you will, Madison, all the way over to Ridge, it's past Ridge to Red Oak Drive.
I have a question. By us encouraging, by the tax abatement, would that increase the traffic in the area? More commercial properties will be built and there will be more traffic?
I don't think it's going to do that, it's just going to, unless people want to go to a ...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Unless folks want to go to a nicer-looking business that's been rehabilitated in some fashion, I don't think it has an effect to encourage or discourage traffic on that area.
Do we know, I'm sorry, for the chair, do we know, according to the current zoning that's in place right now, how many additional square feet of commercial property are possible to be developed? Does it do that calculation?
I don't believe that was included in the planner's report.
Anybody who has a piece of commercial property that's not developed and they've developed it now, they're entitled to a tax abatement as well in this program, or showing people that have an existing ...
Tom, it's new construction as well, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's ...
That whole area, you can't even afford another car over there, so if you can encourage any more commercial, if you can encourage any more commercial, you can't handle this. That's, I came up with this idea.
I think, I think that it'd be good for the board to know what the total build-out is. In other words, they both curb commercial properties, and tell us what the total build-out is in terms of square footage, how many additional parking spaces that adds to the area, then we get a better idea of what we're really talking about.
So, you're really talking about what's vacant that could be developed, as opposed to ...
Well, not only what's vacant, what's maybe currently commercial, those properties are improved upon, and the additional square footage should be developed on those properties. This way, maybe the board gets a better idea of what type of rehabilitation they have.
Can we get a traffic analysis on that area?
I'm sorry.
Can we get a traffic analysis in that area?
So, this wouldn't, you know, other ...
They could come up from ...
Tom, Tom, why don't you come up to the microphone, they can't hear you. This is, Thomas Henshaw is the township manager of Lakewood, I don't know, I guess everybody knows Tom, but.
As far as that question is concerned, it's already zoned commercial, so they don't need rehabilitation to come in and put a commercial project in, so that really doesn't affect what we're trying to do here. I mean, it may escalate the faster development there, but it's not going to change the fact that they're already zoned commercial and they can put something in there.
They have huge savings now, so this is opportune time for them to do it, they'll jump on board, why not?
We're just, it's already zoned commercial, sir.
Fine, but they're not going to put up a commercial building, it's all they've killed right now. They have no problem waiting and starting with the project, and it's, that doesn't ...
Well, it also rehabilitates those commercial properties that need to be rehabilitated.
I understand that, so if you want to ...
So, we're trying, we're trying to clean the town, we're trying to clean the town up at the same time.
If you could split that up, that it's on properties that need redevelopment, not new construction.
You can't do that.
Yeah.
But we may be able to provide what the, what the build-out is, what that, what that additional square footage is, if any, because I don't know that there's much that's not developed already on this section of County Line.
If we're down to one or two properties, it's not so much, the traffic's not going to go, is one thing. If the whole thing's going to be rehabilitated, and there'll be a lot more traffic, I think we've got to take into consideration the traffic over there.
Mr. Henshaw, what is the objective of the ordinance? What is the board's intention of the compromise? You could summarize.
It really attempts for the township to clean that area up and put, and have rehabilitation done on, there's, the county's doing work on there, so we figured that we would coincide with it and do this, because with what they're developing and putting in streets and some sides, sidewalks and things, that we would add this to it to help encourage people to fix their properties of commercial properties.
The township making a turning lane all the way down on County Line Road right now?
That's a, that's a county road, I wouldn't know.
You keep saying commercial properties, but residential properties as well?
Residential properties are not under this rehabilitation, only commercial.
So, if you have a residential, if you have a residential property in a commercial zone, they could take that and turn it into a commercial property as well?
But they have to come and get a variance, so.
They don't, what do they need a variance for?
Because it's, they can't just go from residential to commercial without coming to the board.
The first priority is our site plan.
I understand. They, they still ...
If there's no variance, they'll get it.
If there's no variance, they'll build.
Well, if it's a residential in a commercial zone, they can, anyone can do that at any point, but as Mr. Jackson indicates, you need, you need to have site plan approval for that.
Yeah, and if there's no variance.
Okay, site plan approval. Same thing, you still, you'll have to come up and get approval.
If this was a little study, I guess the board wants to see a study on the traffic analysis, on the traffic impact, it's okay.
Yeah, it may be negligible, because it may not be that many properties that could be, that could be added.
Who was the one who requested this?
It came, it came to the township committee from Lakewood Development Corp.
Anybody in particular, or that's ...
No, the LDC adopted a resolution and said, "Hey, township committee, take a look at this." And it's probably in conjunction with this, Tom indicates, the county doing some work there. It's a means of encouraging ...
It's the strangest place to pick up, to pick a redevelopment, that whole place is in Lakewood, right there.
Well, it's, don't, don't use that word redevelopment, it's rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation.
And there is such a significant distinction between those two, and I wanted to point that out. But it, it came from LDC trying to encourage the rehabbing, if you will, of certain areas.
For the board's perspective, if you could know what the total build-out is talking about?
Yeah. We can probably get that, Tom, from Mickel.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know if the board wants to see what the traffic impacts on there, but the other one, please.
I suspect there's not that many properties that are going to be out there, that, or ...
A total build-out, you're talking about another 100,000, 15,000, 500,000?
Yeah, you can, I think you can see from the map, it doesn't, I don't think it gets to any dimensions like that, because it is that narrow corridor, it only is the properties fronting on County Line.
Mr. Hensel, Hensel, you mentioned something about 45-day time period for the board to return their comments. We are coming up on that 45-day time period, where they think if we don't respond, the committee can act without the board's recommendation, but I just wanted to point that out, that we are about to pass that 45-day time period. I want to say that the committee was a little anxious to move this forward quicker, rather than ...
We'd definitely like to get a, could we request a amendment of some sort?
An extension of the 45 days.
I don't know, speaking of how that works, but I'm sure ...
The way it works is, the board has the opportunity to have, review it and send comment up to the governing body, because the governing body may or may not follow, if openly the governing bodies are sitting. So, this is the floor to take on to get input from the planning board. So, if there is no input, that governing body can act. So, you know, if there are concerns, if you want to make a resolution or motion and send a message to the governing body, this is a chance to do it. Only after the 45 days is ...
Why do we always get so, the last minute?
That's exactly right.
We got it beginning of the, beginning of January, but we had our January 3 rework meeting, and the only other meeting we've had since that was January 17. I don't recall why that date didn't work for us, but it didn't. Oh, we didn't have enough time to cry legal notice.
We were also required to send out legal notice in advance of this hearing, and we had to send, it was like a thousand notices out, you know, so a lot of notices. I mean, these are, these are the ones that came back.
Basically, it makes no difference how, how the board votes, the township committee can adopt it regardless.
Do you always do that?
Oh, no, 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 the board can make recommendations that the township committee will consider, certainly. If the board's recommendation is that a traffic study or a build-out should be encouraged, the township committee may in fact consider that and review that as well. I don't, don't slight this, this process here, the process is there for a reason, certainly. And the township committee does seek input from you guys, because ...
I think the right thing would be, that's what I hear from the board members, we should have a build-out and some kind of traffic study to know what the impact is going to be.
Well, it's not, they're not encouraging any redevelopment, it's just so that they get the best money in their property to operate it. Is there any scrutiny or follow-up? Somebody gets their tax abatement, how do you know that they're taking the savings and actually putting it into their property?
Oh, no, the, the abatement comes after the improvements are done, as the taxes are assessed against the improvement that's done, they make application and say, "Hey, I did these improvements, don't hit me with this additional tax, give me the abatement." There's an application process that goes on with the five-year abatement.
Okay, so that means somebody resides their house, or puts in, not house, building, puts in new, puts in new windows or new roof, whatever, to make it look better?
No, it's, it's much more substantial than that, much more significant than, as far as the improvements go.
What would be a real-world example of what would happen?
Tom?
As far as?
What would be the process? If somebody has a store in a designated area and wants to upgrade it?
Okay, it would be, it would come back as an ordinance introduction as to what the process was for that individual, what they did, and then it would be a second reading for discussion, and the committee would vote on it, and then it would become an abatement program for that, for that commercial development.
This is after they put their improvements in?
Correct.
So, they have to hope that they're going to satisfy the governing body that what they did is enough to get the taxes?
Correct.
So, why should somebody do improvements then?
It's a five-year, the first year, they are not taxed on the improvements that they've done, the year after that, it's 20 percent, 40 percent, 60, 80, and in five years, they're back to paying 100 percent on the improvement.
It just gives them incentive to fix their properties up.
Angela?
Is it only on the improvement?
Yes, that's my understanding. Tax abatement's only on the improvements.
Correct.
We have a question from a board member, Angela?
Hi, I'm Lori. I just wanted to, over the end of preliminary investigation report, and on page 4, it's currently listed for vacant properties, and one is currently there, I counted 55 vacant properties, vacant lots, and obviously, we haven't decided a lot of what needs to be built, but I think that's significantly, significantly ambiguous to be able to imagine what, what the impact might be. So, I just wanted to confirm before I come to a conclusion that there's, there are 55 vacant lots along this corridor.
Which could all be made commercial.
I think I would say, yeah.
No, no, they cannot, they cannot be all made commercial, and I can't give you the count without going through that, that report. Unfortunately, our, the planner that prepared this is not, is out of state this evening, but the vacant lots go to whether it's in a commercial or residential or whatever zone, so it may be vacant, it may be in a residential, it may be zoned residential as opposed to zoned commercial. There are different, there are different zonings as you go down County Line Road, and as I said, it's only that corridor, it's not going deeper than, than the lots that front on East County Line Road.
I mean, we might, we might see the results of the downtown study, we may say, okay, this is not that significant, or we may say, well, maybe it's too much.
I suspect it's not that significant, because of the, just looking at, well, just looking at the map and with the highlighted lots that are involved in it, it does not look like, and you folks would know East County Line Road better than anyone, I think, as to what's built there.
I know there's a lot of traffic there.
Lot of traffic, but I don't know that there's much vacant land out there.
Actually, there's a lot of traffic everywhere.
Yes.
We've got to take that into consideration, the traffic. John, we open this to the public?
The public will give its input, and then after the public give its input, the board will deliberate and make a determination of what advice you want to give to the governing body.
Okay, so, we would open it to the public, I would like to limit it to four minutes, not more, per person. You have, you have your timer?
I see.
Okay.
If it's only one minute or two minutes, that's going to make your point more impactful.
Okay.
Now, just give your name and address.
Please state your name, we're affirming everybody, no?
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Haggenfeld, 1503 Berkowitz Avenue.
Speak into the mic.
John, do I have to be sworn in?
No.
No?
Thank you. Sylvia, S.I.L.B.I.J.A.
Can you hear it, can you try to?
Okay. All right. Is this good now?
Can I, why don't you stand, can you stand to the side here so you can get right up there?
Yes, okay. Is this good now? All right. Sylvia, S.I.L.B.I.J.A., H.A.G.E.N.F.E.L.D., I live at 1503 Berkowitz Avenue. This is greed, nothing but sheer greed. If you are, if you are, if you go along with this insanity, you best have funds available for ambulances on each corner of the street and have a mortuary on standby. There have been over 100 accidents in this course of, of a year, 100, okay? Are you prepared for the consequences of voting yes on this project? My advice to you would be getting professional help for yourselves as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, please state your name and address.
Norrington, 192 Coventry Drive, resident of Coventry Square, 45 years. I can attest to how bad County Line Road is and Kennedy Boulevard. In four short blocks, we have three banks, two gas stations, two shopping centers, one with 23 stores, the other with 10. Two apartment complexes, one with 45 buildings, another one with 30 buildings. One condominium, 633 units, over 2,000 cars coming out of that a day. We have a dentist on the corner with another business in his office, we have Kentucky Fried Chicken, we have two shools within less than a block, we have a very short street on Berkowitz, which is soon, the Satmyers are supposed to build a shule there. We have four intersections on four corners, we have three lights, traffic lights, we have approximately close to 3,000 homes off of County Line Road, we have five shools, seven schools, three shopping centers on West East County Line Road, we have Agway with over 200 homes, Apple Street was just built, Somerset Shopping Center, we have at the lower end, down by Calvary Academy and that, a whole new development. We are stacked to the mountain, we can't go anymore. And as this gentleman said, now, I'm, I know I heard him, and my friends that sat behind me heard him, he's, quote him, I'm quoting him, "To encourage redevelopment of commercial property, this was supposed to be discussing an indication for rehabilitation on homes." There are homes there, okay? Coventry is 45 years old or more, are you going to move all those condos out to make it nicer? Let me tell you, every development off of County Line Road, on the right-hand side or the left, empties out to Kennedy or County Line Road. We can't take any more commercial development. There may be 55 empty lots, but let me tell you something, any more commercial development goes in there, we're in trouble. I was responsible for getting the intersection by Wawa straightened out with the light. Thank you to one of the past members of the, the planning board, okay? It was a disaster. Every week, we have accidents. I've lived in Coventry 45 years, we, for years, we wanted a light there, do you know what happens? They run the lights now. This is an accident, we happen to put more commercial there. We are stacked to the mountain, we cannot get out of our developments. So, any more commercial, any more housing is not necessary. I don't care what they do with those empty lots, okay? Put a single-family home on it, but no more basements. We had three homes on East County Line Road, and now there's 20, 12 homes with 12 basements, and they back out onto County Line Road. Have any of you gone in that area lately? It's terrible. Please, please, here are, please, this, we're talking about our lives.
Thank you.
Come on, I have to follow.
Wait one second, please. Please state your name and address, please.
Joan Miller, 948 Somerset Avenue.
Okay, please proceed.
I'm going to start by asking a question, do any of you live over there?
I work there. Okay.
I live on the corner of County Line and Somerset. I live on the corner that is now being gussied up. I moved onto that corner 13 years ago, it was beautiful, it was a beautiful neighborhood. It was a sleepy little corner, we had farms down the street, my husband and I and our family moved there because it was supposedly the end of Lakewood. My husband and I and our family moved there because it was supposedly the end of Lakewood, and we wanted that kind of setting to live in. Sometimes, at certain hours of the day, it takes me a full 10 minutes to be able to get out of my driveway. I feel like this town is pushing me out of my home. That's what I feel like. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herskowitz, please state your name and address, please.
You just stated my name.
For the record.
Harold Herskowitz, 1496 Cedar Row. That's the neighborhood that's probably never going to end up ending up looking like all these neighborhoods that we're talking about now, because too many powerful people live in that neighborhood. So, I'm lucky. I live in the nice neighborhood. Okay. This is going to go to Tom Henshaw and to all you people. I just want to know one thing. If you're going to call this an area in this town a redevelopment zone, an area in need of redevelopment, I want to know, by show of applause, how many of you drive down County Line Road and think to yourself, "Ech, this is a horrible street. This needs redevelopment." How many of you drive through downtown Lakewood, Clifton Avenue, and say, "This is an area in need of redevelopment"? How many? Okay? Your downtown, your own downtown, where so many people, me included, put all their life savings into buying buildings, redeveloping those buildings with their own money, never getting a tax abatement? I didn't get a tax abatement. Bagel Mosh didn't get a tax abatement. Pizza Plus didn't get a tax abatement. Juvenile Planet didn't get a tax abatement. Lani Doc Clothing didn't get a tax abatement. These are things that improved the town. These are things that made our town beautiful, brought business into the town. None of us asked for a tax abatement, yet you're going to go getting a tax abatement to some jerk who buys a piece of property because he knows somebody, who knows somebody on the LDC, who's going to talk to somebody on the township committee, who happens to have a manager of all these strip malls on the township committee, and he's going to go and tell Tom Henshaw that this should be a redevelopment zone, when I can't even get Tom Henshaw to put free garbage cans in the downtown? Free! No cost to the town. I can't even get garbage cans. I can't get tree maintenance. I can't get anything done here. But you're calling that area, that area's a redevelopment zone? And as far as you listening to any of this hogwash and stupidity, I don't think, I don't think you should even be listening to any of this stuff. As far as you advising them to do a traffic study, why waste my taxpayer money, our taxpayer money, on traffic studies? Any of these people can give you a traffic study. By just driving down the street and waiting for half an hour, there's your traffic study right there. So I don't even think you should be listening to any of this baloney. It's over. It's over, and it's going to end soon. And our township committeeman, who happens to be the manager of all these strip malls that are being built, and all these office buildings that are being built, he's going to have to get off the township committee, and this is going to have to end.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, please.
Yes, Kathy Stowell.
We still remember you.
Kathy Stowell, FD.
You used to sit right over here.
I did, I did. Thank you. My address is 950 Brook Road. So my home is located right off the intersection of East County Line and Brook Road. And I have to say, this gentleman's energy about the situation is in my thoughts, too, because I was troubled by Mr. Henshaw's, I was troubled by Mr. Henshaw's endorsement of what appears to be an endorsement of weighing heavily on the side of rehabilitation. First of all, coming to our attention for the first time is that it's commercially zoned on County Line Road, which I'm trying to figure out, it happened in December 2013, and we were never notified that they were changing the zone to commercial. That's right next to our property. So I do want to speak with the attorney and find out exactly what the process is when you change a zone. You're required for this rehabilitation information to send out registered certified letters. I would assume that when you're changing a residential zone to a commercial zone, it would have required similar notification, and yet we received nothing. So I'd like to...
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Sure.
Just so the board is aware.
Kathy Stowell. She used to be a board member.
Just so the board is aware, I believe most of the area is zoned residential. However, there was an ordinance that was passed in, it may have been 2013, sometimes right around then, as Ms. Stidwell said, that permitted commercial uses on County Line Road that met certain qualifications, such as being a regular pass at the heat of major intersections. It is all outlined. So the zone itself did not change. The permitted uses within the zone were modified, and I believe the people notice requirements are different for that, but I couldn't speak as to the exact details on how it was.
Okay, I'd like to find out. I cannot take this meeting to do that. But going back to the traffic issue, if you build it, they will come. So the, I avoid East County Line Road, and I've lived there for 47 years. I avoid it. I travel at 6:00 AM or come home at 2:00, so that I'm getting as little of the traffic impact as possible. It is huge over there, and more commercial buildings, obviously there's more traffic, people coming to work in a commercial building on a property than you would have with a residential property. Absolutely. So the question, too, is that you use the word industrial in there. Commercial and industrial could seek a five-year tax abatement. Is there industrial uses intended with this rehabilitation?
I don't believe there's an industrial zone over there. That's the statute that speaks to the idea of when a tax abatement is...
But I didn't think there was a commercial zone over there, and apparently there is an ordinance that allows some commercial buildings. So is there, is that ordinance got industrial uses in it as well?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can't tell you for sure because I didn't research that before.
Okay. Well, the, my current concern, too, is that by going to rehabilitation, is that the next step to getting you to redevelopment? So in other words, the first thing they come in and say, "Well, we're just going to do a rehabilitation zone," which is not such a bad thing, because all it's going to do is allow people who build there to have a tax abatement for five years. But is there a strong possibility that if you go in the direction of a rehabilitation zone, that the next step will be very easily a redevelopment zone, which then will allow properties to be condemned along County Line Road for usage by the town if they deem it a necessary use? So that's my bigger question. Is this just a tiptoe away from it being redeveloped?
That can only be a rhetorical question. You can't, no one can tell you what the future holds.
Okay, but it would be reasonable to assume that that could happen, because if we're going from...
I can't prognosticate.
The letter says redevelopment.
If I may, separate really quick. I, we're going to do a redevelopment. I can do redevelopment, and I can do rehabilitation in a redevelopment zone. So I wouldn't have to go and do a re, and just do the rehabilitation. If I wanted to redevelopment, I can just go to redevelopment. I didn't have to go to rehabilitation. Both of them are included in redevelopment.
Yes, I see that, but what this gentleman just said is that you could very easily go from rehabilitation to redevelopment as well. It's not precluding you from doing that. Right. It's not precluding them from doing that.
It's not a stepping stone. You don't do one and then necessarily...
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
So come up, please.
It's not, it's not a stepping stone. You don't do one and then the other. As Mr. Henshaw was indicating, the township committee could seek to do a redevelopment right off the bat. It isn't do rehab and then step to redevelopment. And it's not an indication that that's, that the intention is to go forward with that.
But isn't, isn't that more because the criteria for redevelopment is higher to meet than it is for rehabilitation zones? So because you have this rehabilitation zone and you meet the one piece of the criteria for that, that makes it an easier do than going for redevelopment?
I don't believe that's the case. I don't believe that that becomes a criteria to go from rehab to redevelopment. I don't think the statute calls for it.
Thank you.
I'm over my time. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address, for the record.
My name is Ronald Ronko. I represent the homeowners at 1108 East County Line Road. I am an attorney from Florham Park, New Jersey. Sure, W.R.O.N.K.O. When dealing with a designation of rehabilitation, NJSA 40A:12A-2 sets forth the legislative intent for such a designation. The legislature provides that such a designation be used only if the conditions that exist are not likely to be corrected by private effort. Throughout the proposed designated area, private effort has been transforming East County Line Road. There is a new massive commercial building that is being built at East County Line Road and Brook Road on a lot that is listed in the preliminary investigation report as vacant. There is a new residential development that is being erected across from Calvary Academy. A new residential development has been approved by this board in blocks 195 through 197 that are listed in the preliminary investigation as being vacant. That's the estate of Manic Development, yet it's listed as vacant in the report. Two lots of Block 207 have been sold to a developer with the intent to subdivide the property for development. There is a new commercial building being constructed right after Joe Parker Road. There's a new one right after Ridge Avenue at 1144 East County Line Road. There are new residential developments on either side of County Line and Ridge Avenue. From Somerset up through Squankum, five to six new commercial properties have gone up. Designating East County Line Road from Somerset to Joe Parker Avenue runs against the statutory intent because private effort has transformed and is continuing to transform this stretch of East County Line Road. The preliminary investigations report as to the designated area is fatally flawed. First, the report claims underutilization. In addition to what I've just laid out, the report includes large areas of land that are dedicated to places of worship and to EPA-protected wetlands. With the new developments that are going up, East County Line Road from Somerset to Joe Parker is going to reach a point of being nearly fully utilized if it hasn't already. Second, the report fails to consistently apply its criteria. The definition of the lineated area are properties that would have frontage on Ocean County, Route 526, and be located within 1,000 feet of the center line of an intersecting major roadway. In some areas, the study includes homes that do not have frontage on East County Line, but that are on surrounding streets. This results in many older homes not on County Line being included. In other areas, the study strictly applies its criteria to include only homes with frontage on East County Line Road, so that many newer homes can be excluded from the study. The study fails to apply the 1,000-foot radius consistently throughout its study. The board should not approve a measure based on a report that does not consistently apply its criteria. The inconsistent application of criteria gives rise to a disparate treatment claim. Additionally, the criteria used deliberately excludes new construction to meet the 50% standard. Moreover, the limitation of homes having to be within 1,000 feet of an intersection is also designed to exclude large numbers of new construction along East County Line Road, but not within 1,000 feet. This random criteria is designed to defeat the statutory purpose, which is only to designate those areas where private actions will not turn the area around and where the residential housing stock is older than 50 years old. It may also be designed to single out original residents to force them out of their homes in a redevelopment plan that is to come at a later date. With all of the new development and business between Somerset and Ridge, it has yet to be seen what the impact will be on traffic volume. Already, East County Line Road is choked with traffic during large portions of the workday and grows more dangerous by the day. The board should focus on Lakewood's neglected downtown business districts and other areas if it wants more commercial development. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, for the record.
Rocha Deutch, 124 Rosebank Street. That's right off of East End Avenue.
Can you spell your last name?
D.E.U.T.S.C.H.
Are there coming more guys?
I live on Rosebank Street, which is right off of East End Avenue. Sometimes in the morning, or even in the afternoon, it takes me upwards of 10 minutes to get through either of those lights. There's two ways to get out, actually three, which people are doing now, going down the one-way East End Street the wrong way. I remember when Agway was the store where I went to buy tomato plants, but now it takes me 15 minutes sometimes to get from my house to Piner on some mornings. So, based on what everybody else said before me, I really think this is a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, you hear, is it a planner or a attorney?
Just to, just to give information, Ally mentioned, for the record, Brian Flannery-Jackson, New Jersey. Ally mentioned she wasn't aware of if there were uses. The gentleman that was up a few minutes ago indicated what the 1,000 feet was done discriminatorily to come up with this. The 1,000 feet was in the ordinance, it was an ordinance that allowed conditional uses to permit neighborhood commercial in the area. So we've had all of the speakers come up, what I hear, which is what the board said in the beginning, can the traffic handle it? The board said, "We need something to see if the traffic works." Sitting there, it seems like that's the issue. We got a very entertaining presentation from Mr. Herskowitz, where he kept talking about redevelopment. This isn't redevelopment, and the one thing to know about the commercial uses in the other area, they, if they're in the urban enterprise zone, they're eligible for the tax. So I don't, I don't know why he didn't apply for a tax abatement, if there's reasons he doesn't qualify for the tax abatement, but some of the uses along here may be the same thing, they may not qualify.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, for the record.
Beth Fisher, 123 East County Line Road, owner of Stitch and Sew. You cannot expand building on County Line Road unless you plan to expand the road. Every day, there is a detour on County Line Road. My employees, my customers are constantly complaining they are being detoured to areas they don't know because they cannot get through. From Joe Parker Road all the way to Route 9, there's always detours. So there's no way you can expand if you're not going to change the road.
Thank you. Next. Please state your name.
My name is Yakov Weisman, 9 New York Avenue. I use the County Line intersection all the time. The congestion is beyond words to describe anyone with common sense. The only rehabilitation that anyone with common sense will say is to knock down 50% of the commercial buildings and residential and the whole County Line, and the Lakewood Township will turn back for human use. That's the only thing I could say here.
Thank you. Next. Please state your name and address, for the record.
Israel Ostrow, 1153 Marcella Court. So I think that there's, after hearing all the testimony and hearing the board's questions, I think there's an important distinction that needs to be made between commercially-zoned property and existing commercial property. The stated objective of this ordinance or, or resolution by the township, by the representatives of the township, was to rehabilitate existing commercial structures. If you, we're not talking, we're talking about somewhere where we all go every day. I live on a cul-de-sac which is in the zone between Ridge and Red Oak. There's no existing commercial structures there. It's all private homes that will, this is providing an incentive to convert to commercial property. I think based on the needs of the neighborhood, there should be a disincentive to convert private homes to commercial property. Granted, they are zoned for that, but providing an additional incentive, I don't think is helpful to anybody. I mean, there are no existing commercial structures between Red Oak and Squankum, probably. And then on Squankum, there are a couple which perhaps do need rehabilitation. But, I mean, I mean, if we're going to talk about it, let's just call it what it is. We're basically providing an incentive to take private homes that people lived in and convert them to commercial properties. Thanks.
Thank you.
Does this apply to applications that have approvals already, or these are the new applications, the tax abatements?
As far as...
If somebody has to build an application to build an office building in this area?
As long as they haven't, as long as they haven't received a TCO or CO, they would qualify.
Basically, just checking the area, who's waiting for, his name is great.
Joe Lebowitz, 210 East County Line Road.
I'm sorry, sir.
Lebowitz, L.E.B.O.W.I.T.C.
And your first name was?
Joe, J.O.V.L.
Your address?
210 East County Line Road. Basically, nothing to add on, but County Line Road is more or less, we have, we have no need, more, more office buildings, especially five-story office buildings, which there's rumors that 15 office buildings are waiting to get approved for that, and that's going to add to the traffic. If you want to talk about helping out County Line residents, try to help the traffic there. For example, Kennedy. Why is the township not doing anything to open Kennedy Boulevard all the way from Wawa till Brook Road, which there's a paper street there? So if you want to help bring commercial to, more commercial to County Line...
It's vacated, really.
It's not vacated. There is still, it's not vacated. The township still has the right of way. Check it out.
Okay.
So Mr. Flansmore said it's not vacated.
Okay.
If you want to help out the County Line area, help the traffic. If you open up, and you know, I know you have a story, the traffic in Squankum area, it's terrible.
That's a county road, no?
County Line is a county road. Kennedy Boulevard is not a county road, it's a township road.
Wait, Kennedy Boulevard, yeah?
Kennedy Boulevard is a township road, and the township can open it up tomorrow if they want. they want. So, if they want to help out the residents in County Line, the business, bring more business.
They can find a venue, keep it down, and we can't hear anything up here.
So, basically, I think you should disapprove it, not approve it, and send it back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. John. Mr. Franklin, yeah?
On that, Kennedy Boulevard. 15 years ago, in 1967, when I came on the Township Committee, that was one of our major projects, was to open Kennedy Boulevard and do away with the traffic on County Line Road. The county was going to build the road for us, but things happened, and they didn't have the money, and we didn't have the money. And then the builders saw a lot of the property that we had bought up, and we bought, I think, 120-foot wide strip all the way back to Kent Road so that we could get this traffic moved over there. And then the builders came, and we couldn't get the road in, they sold the property off to the builders, and they built the houses, and the road never proceeded after that.
Even on Apple, there is still a right of way of 50 feet. There's still a road there.
Well, there's still the road, but the...
I'm not talking to make it like Route 70, but just a regular road, helping out County Line.
John did.
But to get that, to get that traffic over there now, I think is a big problem.
Just divide it evenly.
Okay. Next. Please state your name and address, please.
Avram Fishman, I live on Marcela Court.
Please be quiet.
Avram Fishman, I live on 1150 Marcela Court. Also, a cul-de-sac off County Line, but not directly off County Line, you would have to go around to County Line Road East in Rain Tree, but all houses around us are called vacant. Were not vacant, are right now currently rented out and being held by investors, waiting for the opportune time to switch what you call in the zone, but switch the zone. And what we're doing here is we're incentivizing them to do that. Maybe not now, maybe this is not the incentive itself, but the Township Committee should be aware that it's two things. One is you're ruining the neighborhood itself. Second, well, traffic is horrendous. Every single person came up here, and that's clear. So, it should just be on record that it's not wanted, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Please state your name and address, please.
Martin Berger, 1159 Marcela Court, Lakewood, New Jersey. I'm living in Lakewood now 39 years. I grew up down 14th Street. I got married, lived in Whispering Pines, moved down to Massachusetts. Took 25 minutes to get from one side of town to the other side of town. I now live in Rain Tree. Now, it's, sometimes, at 5:00 this morning when I left for work, it took me six minutes, seven minutes to hit Route 9. Do it during the day, 20, 25 minutes. I understand you have it as redevelopment. There are a lot of houses there. The people are waiting, either they purchased them, you're calling them vacant lots. There, there's nothing wrong with trees, number one, and grass, that's a very nice thing. There are properties that are owned by people that are just waiting. Either they have it as a small office building, they're waiting to turn it in. Are you going to tell me there's not going to be more traffic? As people have said before, try driving down it. Forget about the construction that's going on because you're trying to make it better. I understand that. But you have two lanes, one each way, no sidewalks, or maybe you're putting in sidewalks. You don't have a turning lane, you can't get down there, it can take a half hour. So, I understand you're trying to help by maybe redeveloping it, make it look nicer, make it look nicer, put up some trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Please state your name.
Jerry Ballwin, 208 Governor's Road. It seems that of the six reasons that are eligible for this thing to happen, the only thing for this is that so many houses are, the housing stock is at least 50 years old. And yet, this is not going to apply to the housing, it's only going to help the commercial. So, it seems like it's such a fraudulent way to say that this is the only, that this is why this should happen, using the housing stock to help for the commercial tax abatements. It just doesn't seem right. The second thing is, some of that area is in the office transitional zone, and I was not aware that that now is commercial. So, was that part of the ordinance change of December 2013 that included the office transitional zone to be also have a commercial permitted use? Because that's part between Squonkum to Route 9 is the office transitional zone. I think that needs to be looked into. And on page two of that report, there is a paragraph that states, "The delineate area is in a designated metropolitan planning area." I think that's a big mistake, to say that it's a metropolitan pit planning area of the state development and redevelopment plan. There are five planning areas. The first one is the metropolitan planning area, there's the suburban planning area, there's the fringe zone, there's environmentally sensitive zone. Lakewood is in the suburban planning area, not the metropolitan planning area. So, I would hope that if, and I don't remember when Lakewood has been changed and officially called being in the metropolitan planning area. So, if I am correct, that we are still in the suburban planning area, that that be changed in that report on page two of the report submitted by the planner.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public who'd like to be heard on this application? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close it to the public. Would you like to sum up?
As some of the individuals have indicated, it isn't a redevelopment, it's a rehabilitation, and it is only providing for a tax abatement for commercial properties in the area pursuant to ordinance. The statute does permit this to go forward in the fashion that it's proceeding, and it is not a stepping stone to something such as redevelopment. I don't think redevelopment was ever intended for this area at all. This is just to rehab some of the older commercial buildings, and that's the purpose. Why, the LDC brought it to the Township Committee. This isn't something I, I heard some of the speakers thinking it's some dreamed-up scheme or something. No, this emanated from the LDC saying, "We think this needs to be done in this area," and that's how it came to this point, to ask the Board for their recommendations, and it's just the recommendations from the Board.
We heard from a lot of the neighbors who live in the area, that traffic is horrendous over there. Whatever. Can we get some traffic study or a build-out plan to see how many properties we're talking about?
Yeah, it's something I think that can be a recommendation from the Board by way of the resolution that the Board may adopt concerning, its position concerning this.
You don't need a traffic study. It's a ridiculous thing. You don't need a traffic study. Like you said, just write down, you're there all day long, you know exactly what's going on, everybody else here knows exactly what's going on, and there's something...
Mr. Chairman, can I emphasize?
Please, please, no screaming out, please, please.
Hold on. One more time.
Mr. Hirson, what I would recommend on something like this, go down the line, ask each Board member to make their comments, and then at the end, ask for a motion, and the motion would be to make the recommendation and be adopted, or the recommendation and not be adopted, or the motion would have conditions, one way or the other.
Can we make a recommendation if we want more information?
Yes, yes, so, but I would just, so everyone can hear what each member is thinking, and then maybe it'd be pursued by a comment of another member. Just go right down the line and just make some comments.
Mr. Jackson will start with you, and then Mr. Franklin.
It's interesting what they're trying to do here, but I don't think it's necessary. Some of the houses are quite old. The house I live in is 60 years old, and it's just some upkeep, it's all seen on some of them, but a lot of them, they keep the old places pretty decent. I know that the county planned to widen that road many years ago. I remember seven years ago, I was still on the public works, it was supposed to start then, and they're doing it now. Once that County Line Road is widened and all the signalizations put in, it's going to be more of a pleasure to ride on the road. You're still going to have heavy traffic there, as I started to say before. 50 years ago, we tried to move all that traffic over to Kennedy Boulevard, and the county backed out of paying for the road. We didn't have the money to pay for the road. The township did buy that right away on County Line Road, so you couldn't run the road all the way from the end of County Line Road all the way up to Kent Road. That's where they were going to try to beat toward Austin. But I think it's a waste of time and money to try to put this program into effect at this time.
Heather, does any of you have any comments?
After hearing all the comments and the information given to us, I'm not satisfied that there's any justification at all for this proposal.
Thank you.
Mr. Flansbottom?
I'm going to get on the spot. I agree with John a day. Mr. Ronco brought to some point before about the study that I'm very concerned about. He was talking about houses that are listed as vacant, that really aren't vacant, properties that are actually being developed right now, that are listed as vacant. Those are major concerns for me, and I think it should be for all of us. And so, I think it sounds like the study is certainly flawed, and I, I'm not convinced either.
Mr. Rennett?
I think, my opinion is that we're...
Mr. Rennett, you're here.
Okay, okay. My opinion is that we're a representative of the public, indirect representative of the public, and we heard, we heard the public objecting to this. We did not hear anyone from the public in support of this, and that...
This is about 20 people that want to vote. It's closed. It's closed. We're closed. Remember when you said...
Shh. I gave the chance to anybody to speak. We close it for now.
There's a procedure that we follow, this is closed, so please, please, you're great at disrupting the...
Right.
Go ahead, Mr. Franklin, you remain anonymous.
You finished. Mr. Follin?
Seems like somebody has the hand of a cookie jar, and it seems like a scam to me.
Angela?
I take this scene very seriously. I, I like when I'm sitting here making a decision for the decision to be organic, not a judgment call. I don't, only because I'm a judicial body, and I don't consider myself a judge while I'm sitting here, and I just, I don't feel that I have enough information for me to make an organic decision in support of it. It's a judgment call, so I'm not comfortable at this point.
Mr. Catello?
At once, and everyone, I see no upside for Lakewood, I see no upside for so much group of people, so I'm totally against the decision.
John, we still have to take a motion?
You didn't make a comment, or you didn't make one, or you just asked for a motion, whatever your discretion calls.
Make a motion. I just, what I said before, if, okay, okay. Okay, so you want to make a motion?
Make a motion, our recommendation, our recommendation to the Township Committee, which they usually don't follow anyways, but was, would be not to go along with this.
Adopt a similar...
I'll say so.
You would second it?
Yeah.
Okay, we have two seconds, okay.
Two seconds.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hirson?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbottom?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Rehner?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Graffos?
Yes.
Mr. McSill?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Township Committee, I thank you for your time this evening, and thank all the Board members for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Shh. Okay, are we going back to number four now?
Uh, we go...
Resolution.
Number four, which is a resolution for our board's evaluation.
Let's take a two-minute...
Ladies and gentlemen, please be quiet, we're trying to continue our meeting, if you have a comment, we're going to stay in the conversation.
We'll take a two-minute recess. Please go out quietly.
What's the record reflected, Mr. Groff?
In 50 minutes, I think we've talked about, I'll ask the question. I think that, just a lot, everybody goes out, two minutes. We can't hear anything. I think the 50 minutes, I think 50 minutes should last a moment, one minute.
Call the meeting back to order, please be quiet.
Okay. Okay, go. Okay, go. Yeah. Okay. Let's go. It's late. This works, this one. It works.
My study, guys, guys.
It goes, it goes. Okay. Okay. Calling the meeting back to order. Okay, please be quiet. Okay, Ally, let's go.
Meeting is back in session.
All right. Shh. Okay, home in number four.
It's the next round of regulations.
Yes.
Yes, and there is, I did notice there is one blank in there that at least needs to be addressed towards the end, about the end of the newspaper. And certainly, any other comments afterward, I have, I can send it by email, but I also can give you the copy and package.
Is there a second paper in that?
The Triton News is standard for the first news, but I don't know if it's a lot of people like to read the newspaper, but I don't know which one, so...
I think the committee presently using the Triton News, that was a state choice. If the committee changes it, we could call this, or you could add another.
Okay. The Triton News is still existing? I haven't seen that paper in a long time. Okay.
It exists.
All right, scroll down.
Local papers published.
You have the Asbury Report first. I don't know, we should make the Jewish thing.
Right, but even the Shopper's has a daily, right?
No, it's weak, weakly. The Hamadiah is the only thing that's daily.
That's a good idea.
Let's just stay with the press.
Why don't we do the Hamadiah? If you want to do a Jewish one, you have the Hamadiah.
Well, I...
Okay.
Is that of general circulation?
I think the Triton News is not either.
They're like delivered and locked around.
What's the name of the paper?
Hamadiah. Hamadiah. It's a daily paper that comes out every day, and they sell it in all the stores.
I can't hear everybody talk at once.
If it's, if it's got a particular ethnic audience, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so let's leave the Triton News. I just want to talk about two things, unless you want to give a brief?
Well, just, I think some of the concerns were that our rules and regulations are not set out and right, and the Board of Adjustment was the first to act, and I think that their rules and regulations, some of them, were pretty well perceived by various people, and by the committee conference I got back, and so, we did something similar. I modified it to have the specific rules of the planning board. I took out, there was a part, the zoning board has one citation that if you're not an attorney, it seems to imply that you can't cross-examine someone at the, Mr. Klein called me on that, I think it was, I agree.
I think Lakewood, maybe both of them, I agree with them on that.
Anyone can cross-examine a witness, so I modified that a little bit. There's a 50-minute rule that you mentioned to me.
No, it's weak, weakly. The Hamadiah is the only thing that's there.
That's a good idea.
Let's just stay with the press.
Why don't we do the Hamadiah? If you want to do a Jewish one, you have the Hamadiah.
Well, I-
Okay.
Is that of general circulation?
Okay, so let's leave the Triton News. Uh, I just want to talk about two things. Unless you want to give, uh, a brief.
Well, just, uh, I, I think some of the concerns were that, or rules and regulations are not set out and right. And, um, the Board of Adjustment, uh, was the first to act. And I think that their rules and regulations, some of them, were, uh, pretty well perceived, um, by, by various people, um, and by the committee conference I got back. And so we did something similar. I modified it to have the specific rules of the, uh, planning board. Um, I took out, there was a part, um, the zoning board has one citation that if you're not an attorney, you, it seems to imply that you can't cross-examine someone at the, Mr. Klein called me on that, I think it was.
I agree.
I think Act Lakewood, maybe both of them, I agreed with them on that. Anyone can cross-examine a witness, so I modified that a little bit. Um, there's a 50-minute rule that you mentioned to me. Um, the 50-minute rule shall be enforced by the board with any deviation being allowed in the discretion of the board. So if we had a particularly controversial meeting, or if we were under time limits and we had to get it done, you could extend the 50 minutes. But I think that would tell everyone, you know, make sure you keep your presentation to 50 minutes.
We would, we want to try to keep it to 50 minutes, so here is many applications, and be feared that all the applicants coming out.
Is that five oh, one five?
Five oh.
Five zero, which is not that often we call the 50 minutes anyway.
Pass rush, I see.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rassell. He can't clear his throat.
I think we should stick to it. And if we don't finish in 50 minutes, they have to come back next week. Well, they're carried to the next, next meeting.
And, and these rules could always be amended by the board, but I think, um, we should adopt them. They can also have, they make some, uh, regulations from the Cox book that, that he has, and who has, uh, some clarification on conflicts of interest and that kind of thing.
I think also we should put in by the public portion that we will limit it to four minutes.
We'll write that right on our copy, that it's limited to four minutes.
Right.
I've got a question about the newspaper. The idea of newspapers can form the public, uh, global, the majority of global events, not a deal. The Triton News or the Asbury Port Press, what are we gaining by putting into those papers? Why was this at all brought up here?
Under, under state law, you must publish notices of meetings in papers of general circulation in the municipality.
So it has been. So what's, what's, why is there a change here?
There's no change.
There's not a change. It is, yes, very poor press.
Why is there another?
Because we, we need to have two of them.
I think we've always named the Triton News, it just has not been filled in yet on this resolution.
It's what it's like. And, and, uh, you know, it's not like you used to-
I never really see the Triton News. I don't think you-
I don't know, nobody gets it.
Is that because of subscription or something? I, I don't know.
I haven't seen it in years, the Triton.
Are, are there any other, you know, there used to be, you could name a handful of papers. There aren't small papers anymore.
Observer used to be.
I don't think a whole lot of people go to the paper looking for the general, you know, they go to the website for the agenda. If you're gonna follow it, and you know enough to go to the paper, to look through the legal notices about a planning board meeting, then you would know that going to the website and checking the agenda is a much more direct route.
But you still need it legally anyway.
But you still legally need it to post if the website is not legal, you know.
Does the store like you, is that, uh?
It's too much money to start like that.
I don't know.
One thing to start like, it's too much money.
I have to stay. I think it's interesting that no one here can name a paper other than the Asbury Port Press, and it sounds like-
Well, Mr. Habde used to put out a weekly paper, but he's done.
Mr. Habde, what, uh, what, what would you call a paper of, uh, general circulation mainly?
What's the link with papers?
It is very poor presses.
Yeah.
That's it, right?
That's it.
I think that's the only, other than all the blogs, and all papers do all that. So we'll just keep the Asbury Port Press.
And the Triton.
Any other choice.
We need two of them. The Triton News will be the second?
That's why we told this to that.
Okay.
It does still exist, the notice did occur, uh, meeting.
All right, then put the Triton News.
No problem.
Well, that's very cool.
Any other questions, any board, any comments on this resolution? Okay. We, we need a motion on this, right? We have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I move to adopt the resolution within four minutes, including your suggestion of four minutes.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second Justin's motion.
Do we have a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grunberger?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hipperston?
Yes.
Mr. Plansby?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Agarwal?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kitzel?
Moving on.
Okay, we're holding then.
We move on. We do have one item listed on a public hearing that is requested, or, excuse me, is carrying for John's direction because there was a claim file or-
Yes, I'll, I'll address that. There was a, uh, what's the name of it?
Congregation Michigan Attore.
That's the name of it.
Number four.
Number four, and, um, number four on the public hearings.
Number four under public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, congregation, Mr. Gaziraski filed a complaint, you recall with the vote, I think it was six two, as to whether dormitories were an accessory used to a synagogue, I believe. The board determined that that was an accessory use. Uh, the zoning officer sent the letter, uh, I think to Mr. Schmuckler, it was an email, indicating her belief that that was a historic accessory used to synagogue. And Mr. Gaziraski made an argument that it was not, or somebody did. It might have been a different attorney. But regardless, he, he filed a, uh, pro per per complaint in court, um, traditionally, when someone appeals to court, that deprives the agency of jurisdiction. Now the jurisdiction is in the court. I think that's not an absolute rule. Um, I'm working on that. But in this particular circumstance, I think it would be better to allow the applicant's attorney to go to court and tell the judge that this should be remitted back to the planning board, or get a summary ruling, or some kind of an expedited ruling on a merger basis. Um, I spoke to Mr. Doyle today. He has now represented the applicant at length. Um, I told him that if he could provide me with case law or precedent that would support the notion that the board could maintain jurisdiction, then the board would consider that. Um, he asked that the matter be re-listed for February 21st. I spoke to, uh, Ms. Morris about that. Um, so, uh, what my recommendation is, is while this is being sorted out, that it be carried February 21st with no further notices. And, uh, at that time, we should have direction from the court, or a clearer legal opinion that we can proceed.
Will we have that direction in only two weeks?
Well, if we don't, we'll have to adjourn it again.
We have nine public hearings until 21st, one of which is the seat of bridge mall. So-
That's gonna take, I think that's, needs a meeting for itself. No?
That may get pushed off.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that's gonna be-
I, I think you should sit on that. The worst thing will announce it again.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move it?
Scary to 2.1.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Grunberger?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hipperston?
Yes.
Mr. Plansby?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Agarwal?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kitzel?
Moving on.
Okay, we're holding then.
We move on. We do have one item listed on a public hearing that is requested, or, excuse me, is carrying for John's direction because there was a claim file or-
Yes, I'll, I'll address that. There was a, uh, what's the name of it?
Congregation Michigan Attore.
That's the name of it.
Number four.
Number four, and, um, number four on the public hearings.
Number four under public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, congregation, Mr. Gaziraski filed a complaint, you recall with the vote, I think it was six two, as to whether dormitories were an accessory used to a synagogue, I believe. The board determined that that was an accessory use. Uh, the zoning officer sent the letter, uh, I think to Mr. Schmuckler, it was an email, uh, indicating her belief that that was a historic accessory used to synagogue. And Mr. Gaziraski made an argument that it was not, or somebody did. It might have been a different attorney.
The social-
Regardless, he, he filed a, uh, pro per per complaint in court, um, traditionally, when someone appeals to court, that deprives the agency of jurisdiction. Now the jurisdiction is in the court. I think that's not an absolute rule. Um, I'm working on that. But in this particular circumstance, I think it would be better to allow the applicant's attorney to go to court and tell the judge that this should be remitted back to the planning board, or get a summary ruling, or some kind of an expedited ruling on a merger basis. Um, I spoke to Mr. Doyle today. He has now represented the applicant at length. Um, I told him that if he could provide me with case law or precedent that would support the notion that the board could maintain jurisdiction, then the board would consider that. Um, he asked that the matter be re-listed for February 21st. I spoke to, uh, Ms. Morris about that. Um, so, uh, what my recommendation is, is while this is being sorted out, that it be carried February 21st with no further notices. And, uh, at that time, we should have direction from the court, or a clearer legal opinion that we can proceed.
Will we have that direction in only two weeks?
Well, if we don't, we'll have to adjourn it again.
We have nine public hearings until 21st, one of which is the seat of bridge mall. So-
That's gonna take, I think that's, needs a meeting for itself. No?
That may get pushed off.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that's gonna be-
I, I think you should sit on that. The worst thing will announce it again.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move it?
Scary to 2.1.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Grunberger?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hipperston?
Yes.
Mr. Plansby?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Agarwal?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Kitzel?
Moving on.
Okay, so, Mr. Jackson, I think the board member would like to hear, we've got a lot of emails back and forth about vacating the properties, the township is vacating, do we need sidewalks, we don't need sidewalks. Be careful.
All right, I, I would point out on, um, first of all, the, uh, what number is this? That's, uh-
It's number six and it's one through nine.
First of all, you, you will recall that this was a procedure where the board is going to serve as its own committee. We decided that we do this in public so that, um, if light would be shed on it, and, um, that this is a circumstance where it appears that the lots are conforming, and the review process is just to make sure that they're conforming. It's very similar, if you had a, a lot in the middle of town, you just go to town halls, you can fill out a zoning permit, you just get the permit on the spot to build the house. These are no same circumstances. And what our purpose is, is we're serving an additional function to make sure that they're fully conforming. So it's not a public hearing, but we're doing it at the public meeting so that it can be viewed and scrutinized by the public. One of the issues that came up was, um, there are intersecting cross streets. I forget the name of the both of them. I looked at the map, there's two.
The, um, and the situation is those lot, those, you should say, streets are not-
Parkview and Nassau.
I think the developer first thought that they were going to be vacated. I spoke to Mr. Henshaw, I spoke to Mr. Seacare, uh, the town administrator and the borough attorney, and, uh, they both indicated that at present there is no intention to vacate those streets.
We're leaving it as a paper street?
It will remain as a paper street. So it's effectively a public right-of-way, but it won't be paved. It, it may be grass, it may be woods, I don't know what will be there, but it's, won't have tar, and, and cars will pass over it because it will be completed. What the, um, administration, so then the question was, are we going to require people to put sidewalks along-
The paper street?
The, the, you know, so you have a sidewalk on one side, sidewalk on the other side, a grass in between the two sidewalks. It made absolutely no sense. Uh, we looked at the CAFRA plan. The CAFRA plan shows there being no curbs and sidewalks and no streets on there. And, and the ordinance says that they shall be developed in accordance with the, the CAFRA plan. Uh, in speaking with Mr. Henshaw, the concern of the governing body, and I'm gonna have to do a little demonstration here today.
Brian, about the big plan.
You have the big plan.
Yeah, I like it.
Well, what's the reason why the township was not vacating it?
You have lot, lot, and a paper street in between. What the concern was, the main street that goes across, he wants curbs and sidewalks. It go all the way across the front, including the empty space in the middle. So what we agree, what, what, what we came up with, which I think makes perfect sense, the applicants are still required to provide curbs and sidewalks. And instead of ending at their property line, if you're on a corner lot next to one of these paper streets, the requirement is that you'll have to build your curb and sidewalk out to the middle of the vacant lots. Then the one on the other side, when they have to build that, the sidewalks will go across the entire frontage. So they're not being, um, they're not being waived, or not required to build curbs and sidewalks. They just have to put the curbs and sidewalks along their property where it adjoins an actual roadway. So the main concern of the governing body was that there would be curbs and sidewalks along the main street. What's the name of the main street? It's, um-
The, yeah, you have a, a few, uh-
There's several of them, so-
Yes.
So that, that's what the intent is. So in my opinion, after consulting with the, in the school attorney, this is not a curb and sidewalk waiver. This is requiring the developer to follow the ordinance and put the curbs and sidewalks where they're supposed to be, and not in the middle of the grass island where it would be absurd to do that, would actually be a hazard, um, and a complete waste, so.
Where's that paper street go?
The, uh, Mr. Flannery might be able to show you.
You can see, we, there's, uh, two paper streets that are the subject of all this, Parkview and Nassau. Uh, and, uh, the CAFRA plan that was, that was done at the direction of the township, uh, indicated, we're gonna, we're gonna build Wadsworth, we're gonna build Bradhurst, we're gonna build Havens, we're gonna build Broadway, we're gonna build Torren. Uh, in the middle, we pill, build Argyle, uh, on, uh, on the end, we have Parkview, and then it comes out to Vine. So there are internal streets to get around. It was a decision that was made by the township, and an application that was submitted to CAFRA. CAFRA tries to limit the amount of impervious coverage. CAFRA didn't like our 32-foot wide roads. We met with CAFRA, we said, we're in Lakewood, we're building 32-foot wide roads, and they said, okay. Uh, so the plan that was approved, all those end, and we're talking about curb, the curb's in. The pavement, most of the pavement is in. What we're talking about is the sidewalk. So the application tonight is to approve a, uh, a subdivision, which creates, on, on the first one, it creates two lots. When somebody wants to build those two lots, they're gonna have to build the sidewalk and put in the street trees, and do everything else that everybody in town that gets a building from it has to do before they get a CO. And as John-
You say, wait, I'm sorry, that's on the paper lot side?
Well, this particular application doesn't, doesn't abut a paper street. Uh, and, and when that map comes back, I could show it to you better. Here would be, here would be a situation where Wadsworth is a improved street, uh, Parkview is an improved street, Pinehurst is not. So Pinehurst, there'll be woods, or grass, or a park, or whatever the township committee wants, so that anybody that wants to can walk through and get to the next street.
But how about on the side of my house? If I owned that house?
The side of the house, there's gonna be trees. The, the, the side of the house to, uh, the, the trees, there, there's not gonna be any curb, there's not gonna be any side, there's not gonna be any sidewalk on the side.
Can I, I never used one of these, I'm excited.
Brian, how wide is that paper street?
Make sure you don't- 50 feet wide.
Right, right here, so-
And the township wants to, why are they not vacating it?
Why are they not vacating it? Because they don't want to.
They want to make a park eventually?
But it, the intent all along, there's some utilities in it, and the intent was that the, there would be easements for the utilities, and they would be used for some kind of passive recreation. The town doesn't know exactly what they want to do at this point, so they don't vacate it. Anybody that builds, they build on their property, they're giving a, a setback to that property as if it was a street, so they're leaving extra land. So anybody that buys that corner lot, they're gonna have a nice premium lot. They have a little extra, they have ex, uh, 30 feet extra to their property line, and then there's a 50 foot. Now, maybe somebody walks through there. So for some people, that's a benefit. If you don't want people walking through there, you don't buy that lot, you buy one of the other lots.
If they want to put the fence up, they'd have to put it on their property line, too.
Correct.
They couldn't put it out into the middle of the street.
Correct. So, so there'd be, if they fenced it, and, and the fence along that property line could only be four feet high, because it's a, it's a front yard.
And what, what Mr. Henshaw was concerned with, was that Wadsworth would have curb and sidewalk all the way along.
All of the roads that, uh, are part of the CAFRA include curbs and sidewalks. The, the pavement, the drainage, the curbs are, are all being put in by the joint venture contractor. Each house that builds will put in their sidewalk and their street trees.
And the township will never, ever pave that road.
Well, if they do, they'll put in curbs and sidewalks. It's a municipal project and just like if they-
So I can just make the, make the, 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 we're just doing everything right now.
Because they don't want to do it.
Well, and, and additionally, this is a CAFRA project. Uh, that applicant would have to go back to CAFRA, and CAFRA would say, why are you doing it? And there's no logical reason to do it. There's no logical reason to pave that street there. If you, if you want to circulate, there's plenty of room to circulate. If you, if you, you have kids that you want the kids to cut through, the kids can cut through.
On foot.
On foot.
Um, you can't take a park and go. And, and CAFRA balances a lot of different considerations. One of them is the impervious coverage runoff development. So whenever you do a CAFRA plan, they even take into account the roads that you're creating, and how much impervious you're creating.
All right, and the zoning board last night, we had a lady that, that went, oh, no, we should leave some trees. That's leaving trees.
So in summary, we're not gonna put curbs and sidewalks in woods?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
They're gonna look ridiculous. You have a curb and sidewalk, and then grass or trees, and then a curb and sidewalk on it.
No curbs and sidewalks in the woods, I don't think.
It's no curbs and sidewalks.
I have one question. Is this a, is this a first?
No, well-
Well, first of all, the, the first application of this type was approved by this board administratively at the last meeting, and it was for 14 lots, uh, to the, the northeast on property that the township, uh, had previously owned. Since then, it's been sold. But the township, and people always ask, well, why, why did the township get involved in this project? And, and there's two reasons. First of all, they had lots that got improved by this, and they sold for a lot of money, which benefited all the taxpayers. And the second reason is, when you see, when we go through these, th- this person had the right to build these units anyway. So the, the question is, this first guy would build it, and he'd put his road in, and he'd go up with the road like this, and the next guy would build a road, and he'd say, well, I want the road down. And your roads would go up and down, the utilities would be, would be all mismatched, because everybody would do what the utilities meant for them. Okay.
I don't think they have to go revisit that whole thing.
Okay.
Can I just add one thing? And Mr. Hipperson, to your point, it is a first in the sense that this property owner will, has agreed to, through their developer, to build their sidewalk out to the middle. So there's no gap where the paper street would otherwise cross through. So, and, and the way I can justify that is that when you own property theoretically on an understreep, you own, not theoretically, you actually own the underlying fee out to the center line of the property. That's why when a street's vacated, it reverts back to the property owners. It's not sold to them or given to them. When the municipality vacates the right-of-way, it reverts back to the underlying fee owner. So these property owners still own out into the middle of the street, it's just the public has a right-of-way over that.
I understand.
So that's why I, I don't have any problem, otherwise it might be an off-site improvement. I don't have any problem theoretically making a condition that they put their sidewalk out to the middle of the right-of-way. So that's something that, you know, benefits the public at large.
Who'll be responsible for maintenance? Do newspapers don't blow in there, the trees will fall down? Will that need public works?
Well, theoretically, it's the same as, as the, the maintenance of the right-of-way in front of your house, the sidewalk, and the grass strip in front, between your house and the curb. The Public Works doesn't go out and shovel the snow, Public Works isn't gonna go out here and shovel the snow either. The newspapers that, the newspapers that blow in there.
So, so the homeowner would be responsible for half of it?
Yes.
The other homeowner would be.
Yes.
That's good.
Are they allowed to, are they allowed to block the vacant, the street that is not vacant?
No.
Are you talking about pulling the curb?
No, it's out there, it's a public right-of-way. You have as much of a right to walk along there as anyone who lives there does.
No, I think he means block. If that still exists, a right-of-way, you're putting curb across the middle.
Well, it's, it's a township right-of-way, and the township developed this plan showing curb along there. This was a plan prepared for the township, submitted by the township to the NJDEP to get a CAFRA permit, so that this area was developed logically, rather than each person putting in their own, and us being here, there's 129 different lots in here. We could've had 129 different people come in and say, I wanna chop mine into two and build a duplex, and, and one by one, this area would've developed. We have some areas in Lakewood that develop that way.
As to your question, Mr. Grunberger, the municipality can always block all the streets for the Jersey barrier, or across the sidewalk, cones, horses, police, whatever. They, they don't have to always allow.
Why did they open that access across Oak Road?
What's the question?
Why did they open them on some of them?
They opened the middle one because rather than make somebody driving in here that wants to visit somebody over here, drive all the way down and go, go to Vine or.
So where are the streets that go through over there?
Uh, there's a, the Argyle, which is in the middle, goes through. The ones that are colored are the ones that don't go through.
But which ones are open? Which one's a street, and which one's curb?
Uh, in the north-south direction, we have Vine, Argyle, and Parkview.
The other ones, none of those other ones go through?
No.
We, there's two, Pinehurst and Nassau, which do not go through.
The whole thing straight across is, is a paper street or partially, partially paper street?
Just that southern portion is, is improved. That's what he's looking at, on the left side. There is a southern portion of the left, yes.
Oh, yes, yes, that southern portion, and, and that was necessary so that somebody in here didn't have to drive out to Route 9 to, to get to the, the township looked at this one.
There is a rhyme and reason to all of this.
How many houses are there?
129 or so.
How many houses are in between?
The block is, is four duplexes long, so cutting out the middle roadway makes it eight duplexes long, right?
Yes.
How many streets are there that go from Route 9 to Vine?
Yes.
Uh, there's one street that goes from Route 9 to Vine, Broadway. Broadway. Now, you can get from Route 9 to Vine by coming in on Torren, I believe, this.
Providence.
Providence.
Antorin.
Oh, yes, yes, Providence and Torren. You could come in, and then you could come up on Pinehurst, and then come to any of these other roads, too.
Do you wanna go to Terry? Terry, you wanna sum up your reports on Oak Street?
Well, we, you, you have nine applicants.
Nine applications.
As was testified, the applicants agreed that all development for each of these lots is gonna be per the approved Oak Street plans. There are no variances that are being requested on any of these properties.
No waivers and no sidewalks?
If you wanna do it, each application we can. If, if there's any questions, if you wanna take them and acquire it some, if you're pleased.
There's no waivers, no sidewalks, and there's four parking spaces.
Everything, all nine of these applications, according to my knowledge, you're fully conforming with the Oak Street plan.
Yes.
There's no relief necessary.
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and I could show them to you very quickly if you want. It's nine boards that I would flip up.
We found out in the review. You scrutinize? Yes.
Basically, you agree to anything in his report?
Yes.
Terry's report. Any review, Cam?
The review letter reiterates that they have to comply, for the ordinance, they have to comply with the CAFRA plans, as well as the current zone.
Just a quick way, it's probably a mistake, in the lot width over here, or maybe I'm making a mistake, in the lot width, I just opened the first application, required 75 feet, provided 50 feet?
That's one of our comments, the all tables that are on the zero-lot subdivision plans are not correct. We're showing you the lot width as if the property was just the R10 zone and not subdivided for purposes of duplex. When you go to the zero-lot ordinance, the width becomes a gap. It's not shown properly on the plans. As a matter of fact, if you look at each of our letters, we have a section in the letter on the regulation number three, which indicates for the section, the schedule of bulk requirements should be revised to show the 50% reduction. So where they're showing 75 feet, in reality, it's 37.5 feet for per proposed line.
So before this gets filed, it will be fixed, right?
Yes. The, the bulk schedules will be revised to show that 75 feet is required for a duplex, but the zero-lot line provision, each one can then be 37 and a half, and all of them comply.
And they're all, that's all nine applications, the same thing?
Correct.
Okay, so we go one by one, take a motion, how do we do this?
I agree, it's up to the board, same thing.
Yes, yes, there should be a motion to approve them, yes.
But are the committee?
There's no public comment on this, this is not a.
You're about to speak by the public comment.
This is a.
Originally, when you made the decision, you said it will be public comments.
There's no public comments on this. This is not a planning board matter.
So you're about to speak soon. Only have one public comment. You're about to speak by the public, by the public comment.
I want to speak on this application. It's up to the chairman.
There's no more comment on this.
But the chairman could decide whatever he wants.
My recommendation is we have a very, I'm gonna get straight to procedure on this.
I can give a motion, not, not only if Mr. Jackson agrees.
I, I don't think it's appropriate here.
Okay.
But that's, you know, it's your discretion, that's just.
I don't wanna go against you.
If, just to put on the record that I'm not allowed to speak, because I will take it to court if that's the case, and I respectfully disagree with Mr. Jackson.
This is not a notice of public hearing.
It's not a notice of public hearing.
I'm saying, you're about to speak by the public portion.
But it's, it's a public session, and there's no rule that I shouldn't be able to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Flannery, put your concerns on the record.
But you're not the chairman, there's a chairman over here with a board, let them decide.
Okay, you'll speak by the public portion.
What?
You'll speak in a few minutes by the public portion.
So could I put on the record that I was trying to speak, I was trying to.
It's on the record.
Yes, it's on the record, you said that.
And, and I just want to put my name, my name is Schlemmy Klein, and I was trying to speak by the, by the, in my opinion, it's a public portion, I have a lot of concerns that.
Thank you, Mr. Flannery.
Okay, you'll speak soon.
Put your concerns on the record.
I'll let you speak by the public.
So make the public, make the public section before you approve. I'll do everything out of the public.
Please do not disrupt.
What? You're not the chairman, please.
Okay, Schlemmy, please.
Please, you're not the chairman.
Mr. Klein.
You're not the chairman, there's a chairman over here, he decides. What is the opinion of the chairman? I'm allowed to speak on.
We're going along, we're going along with recommendation from their attorney, and you're about to speak by the public portion. Okay, so are we taking our motions now?
Yeah, I recommend you take a motion in a second and decide whether it meets the criteria.
Okay. Al, you wanna go through them?
Yeah, does it go one by one?
And that's what Mr. Jackson said.
SD 2189.
We do all nine at once?
Why don't you do the, exactly the same application?
Yeah, I think you could do it together, unless someone, you could do it the way the committee does a consent resolution where everything's on there. Let me just ask, does anyone here have any opposition to the application as far as, is anyone opposed to approving all these items that are listed on the bill?
Do you want a motion on that?
Yeah, no.
No one's opposed, so so why don't you make a motion to approve?
Before you make a motion on all this stuff, I need to make on the record that I was trying to speak on every application over here.
Okay, we said that. You're about to speak in a few minutes.
What?
You're about to speak in a few minutes.
You're disrupting the meeting, you, you're not, this is not your place to speak and voting, okay?
But it's not your place, this shut down the public from making a public comment.
But do we have a motion to approve, disapprove all applications from one through nine?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Roll call.
Mr. Grunberger.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hipperson.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes, and we'll aside from number nine, I think.
Uh, Mr. Fulman.
Yes.
Mrs. Sipravlos, yeah. Mr. Katsil.
Okay, so Al, you'll send correspondence to the, I don't know.
I didn't call up correspondence, um.
No, I don't, I don't think they require a resolution.
Nope, no, they, they rely on Terry's letter to debate.
But there has to be something in the file that indicates that we're reviewed by the committee and.
How do you want to get that? You should do that on the left.
You going now?
Okay.
We're going now to the public hearing. Number one.
I have number one, SD 2170, made by Shula Melwitz, minor subdivision, need four lots from three on Joe Parker Road.
Terry, would you like to go through your report?
If you can give me a, 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 I am.
Yes.
I will leave the city.
This is a continuation.
Continue public hearing from the left.
Okay, so Al, we wanna say, who was here, who was present, from all?
So that is correct. There, there was testimony at the prior hearing, Chairman.
So it looks like we had Mr. Grunberger, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Hipperson, Mr. Hertzel, Mr. Fulman, Mrs. Sipravlos, and Mr. Katsila, which would be Mr. Brenner, Mr. Plankbaum, or I don't know, here, or had stepped down for that application.
I wasn't here, so.
Okay.
So given it's a continuation, you have the eligible.
I can stay?
Yeah, sure, you can go. You don't have a conflict.
I'm not voting.
You can go back in, you go, no problem. Okay, Terry.
From what our member chairman had the last hearing, there was testimony on the subdivision that's currently shown. There was a request by the board to get more information relative to, just to the portion of the property that would be subdivided and added on to the school property in terms of approximately what the, the, I'm sorry, what was the school's intent in terms of future development they had in mind. And I think what you have in front of you is a concept plan prepared by the alley of professionals. Is that correct?
Well, I believe the, the, the concept plan that was submitted and reviewed by Terry, and now you're giving us an additional concept plan, I'm not sure if this is different or the same.
What it is, if I may, for the record, Abraham Penzer. The board requested specifically, Mr. Hipperson was kind enough to voice his concern and, and lay out two items that the board wanted to hear. First of all, he said, and was a very good idea, was that the lots, lots 190.02, lot 190.03, 190.01, they said, what access do they have? So we've put in before you access easements, that these lots would be the ones that would be, have a complete access easement to the property. So in there, there would be an access easement that would be part of it. In addition to that, there was asked by Mr. Franklin and the board to see specifically what area we were reserving for specifically for recreation and/or parking. And that is, if you look at it, that's the one to the left of it as well. So those were the two items that, that were requested, saying that they could not conceptualize without seeing it before you, that we went and redrew it in regard to it. Just to rehash very quickly, what we were doing over here was, we were trying to create an area for the school to be able to expand, and we had all the parents here, and the consideration of the one extra lot. And that was the, the whole issue that we were dealing with, was how do we explain these easements and the area? And that's what we brought tonight. And that is basically.
188.01, that's gonna be part of the school?
Yes.
Okay.
That whole piece, the green and the crosshatched and all that would be added, all that would be added to the school, and it would be limited to the recreation and the parking.
And all three lots have access to the?
That's correct, they would have cross-axis easement.
To the recreation areas.
Correct, both of them, yes.
All three lots.
That's correct.
Right.
And that's, it specifically says that on the map. If you look at it, you'll see the legend, it's in bold print, that it specifically says that. That was a concern of the board, and we thought it was a very valid concern, and that's why we redrew it that way. Thank you, Mr. Hipperson, for telling us, we do appreciate that. And that was, that was what we, you requested us to do, is what we did.
Okay, so Mr. Penzer, basically, now that we're adding this piece of property, recreation area, the only variance we're seeking over here is, is the width, minimum lot width. Lot area we have with that extra area in the back.
Correct.
Okay.
Did we mark this as an exhibit?
It's the same as the, it's the same as the plan that was submitted to the file, it's just a small, smaller version.
So we should mark this as exhibit?
Mark it exhibit one.
A1, make it part of the.
A1.
Chairman. One clarification, Chairman, I just wanted to say, first, I think the variances are still the same as the three that's here.
That's, that's correct. The variances for the three residential lots are the same. What we did was, the area that's shown in green was, what Mr. Hipperson was asking, was how do, how do we control that, basically, the three residential lots and the green all add up to 60,000 square feet or more? So that we have basically 20,000 square feet per lot with the, with the residential lot and that open space added to it. So that, then our clustering discussion we had the last time comes into effect, so.
With the easements.
With, with that easement, but that's, that's an easement on the school property. So the school may put a basketball court there, they may put, you know, who knows? You know, they can put a softball field there.
Chairman, I may, I have one question.
Yes, Al.
I just note that the plans say this area is to be restricted for recreation and parking.
Right.
I believe that parking is, is open recreational space, I did not know that's part of.
It was.
The area was used for.
Is, is parking, full-time parking, or like on open school nights or something like that?
Only as, only as needed.
So like on school, just regular, nobody's gonna be parking there.
They have the parking lot on the school.
Yeah, you have adequate parking.
Correct.
But they're showing that green area, Mr. Hertzel, has potentially to be used for parking, which is not really my understanding of green open space.
Can we split that green area, like keep the back, with the parking towards the back of the property? And leave the recreation closer to this property?
Yeah, can we split it to temporary parking?
Yeah.
I'm always being, listen, I'm aware of those things, right?
So another school buys this, later, maybe school, and then the car, or, you know, some kind of situation where cars could be parked there. So although I understand how the school believes now that it's not necessary, but we have to think about that a lot. So I think should somehow be restricted to a temporary type of parking situation for a special event, but not turn it into a parking lot.
What is the green, is the green paved?
No, it's.
It's not going to be paved, so it's not legal parking.
No, that's only for overflow and stuff like that. You can't say.
It's not going to be paved.
Then realistically, they can't park there unless you're granting a waiver for parking with non-paved.
No, that's it.
We're, we're asking for a waiver on times when there's an overflow of a parent's teacher's night, or something of, to give out a home, a Bible, a sitter, I don't know, something where there's an overflow of parents once in a while, but it's not something on a regular basis.
I just think it needs to be clarified on the plans. It says parking, does that mean pavement or not?
If it's parking, it's pavement. If it's not park, if it's not pavement, it's not parking.
It's going to be gravel.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever the.
Gravel's not, you can't park on gravel.
We're coming.
Will you come back for a site plan?
We're coming back for a site plan. This is not, this is, we're just coming back here for conceptual layout and a minor subdivision.
Right, but the board asked for a deed restriction. If you're deed restricting an area for recreation.
We're not doing a deed restriction, we're doing an access easement on the map. We're restricting it by that way. We're putting it right here as an access easement.
So it's an access easement for these property owners to use?
Correct.
But the school could go in and make the whole thing a blacktop parking lot if they want to do it?
No, they, that's not.
Yes, they could.
Well, that, that would be an issue that we'll deal with at site plan, because we're coming back for a site plan. This is only a minor subdivision.
Have already been granted, and unless there's restrictions put in place on what they can do there, they can come back and do whatever they want during site plan.
I think we should restrict, the back part of the property should be for the parking, and right behind all these properties, we should leave open area for recreation.
Recre, you know.
Fine, we have no problem with that.
And then that it can't be paved or made impervious?
That's correct.
Okay, so that'll all be, or the deed restriction.
That's fine. Not a deed restriction, a cross-axis easement.
Well, an easement is a restrictive covenant.
Fine, but it's not, I want to be clarified that.
But the easement would, would have to have a requirement that that area, and it would be marked on the site plan as part of the subdivision.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think that would be properly characterized as a deed restriction if it has to stay green.
It's not. It's a difference between that deed restriction, for financing purposes, as owning a bank, we, today we go away from deeds. It takes away, it makes things difficult. It's easier to have a cross-axis easement than it is to say deeds for financing of schools. That's why we try to stay away from that.
We'd have to have a restriction that says that it.
It is, it's restricted through the access easement, but it's not a deed. May operate as that, but it's not a deed.
Same way as deed was?
It's on the filed map.
We could call it a green space easement, but they were.
Or open space, open space.
It's the intent of the board that it would remain green. I'll have to come up with a way. It might have to be a, some kind of restrictive covenant. I'll work on it with Mr. Penzer.
Fine, I have no problem with that.
But that would be a condition, that that has to be a restrictive covenant that's recorded, runs with the land, that would prohibit paving or development.
The map, is the map that's recorded, is a subdivision, will run with the land and be recorded. We'll work out the language, but that's the effect.
It has to be a recorded instrument.
Well, it is, it's going to be the deed, the map is going to be filed.
Recorded in the county registrar.
Then it's the same thing as saying a deed, you're just doing the same word again.
Well, that's where.
I disagree respectfully, I disagree with you.
But that's also where access easements are, have to be recorded.
That's fine. That, that's, there's one thing, it's filed in access easements, and one thing is deeds, it's two different places, and that, both of them are restricted, and they have the ability to restrict.
Record the map and a description on that.
That's what we're doing. We, exactly what we're doing, we're going to record the map and record the description on that. That we can do.
No, a restrictive covenant has to be part of the deed, it has to be to the benefit of these three lots out in the front, and it's got to be part of the deed on this property. Otherwise, it's not enforceable.
Why? Why is it not enforceable?
But I think if it's shown on the map as an easement, doesn't that make it?
Yes, and that's, and that is recorded.
I'm, I'm telling you, it's, it's not effective unless it's a recorded instrument in the county registrar.
It is recorded, it is recorded in the county.
The map gets recorded.
Yes.
And it's got to go where the deeds are recorded, too.
We don't do that with like shade tree and utility.
No, we never do.
Should.
But we never do it. Why are we doing something we've never done before? We've never done, every shade tree, every, every easement is done by map. That's why, forgive me, and I apologize, I don't mean disrespectful in anything else, we've, we've never done it that way. And it, it is a big difference in, for financing purposes.
I have a different view of it than you. I've litigated these, and I've done the research and the case law. It has to be a recorded instrument from a grantor to a grantee, it has to be in favor of someone.
That every map and every easement that has been done from the beginning to the end, we've never done it that way. Forgive me, I don't mean, I have no part in arguing you, but every easement that you'll see in every map is filed in the county, and that's how, that's how.
I will review it further, but that's my opinion.
Okay, I respect it, and I respectfully disagree. And I got to say, that's the way the bank, and I don't mean to, I apologize to you, I'll be happy to talk on that, but that's the way it's always been done by the planning board and zoning board in Lakewood. And I must tell you that this is first, the first time, different. I apologize. I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way, but it's certainly different than what we've ever done before.
I would recommend that a restrictive covenant, I'll take it, I'll look at it further, but my recommendation is that a restrictive covenant has to be recorded, and/or you can't be assured that that will not be developed.
Come back and find the boards, develop, is it going to see a site plan?
They don't want to develop it, just want it as parking.
I know, and.
The only reason is because of the mortgage, it's financing, you're saying.
The mortgage, that would not affect the mortgage if there was a covenant on there that it could not, I mean, that exactly illustrates the point. Let's say a bank then foreclosed on us, they would, if it's not in the chain of title, they would not be required to.
They would see it in the map, when they did a search for the foreclosure, it comes up on the map.
It would be a new lot number as created by this.
Right, but the difference is, is that when an appraiser goes in and goes to an appraisal, when he sees it as a deed, it goes off into value. That's the difference. It's nothing of the effect as legal effect, has to do with a financial effect. And the only way I learned about it was starting a bank.
Right. I understand what your position is on that.
That's the issue. So I advise schools now, that's the reason why.
If they want it to be perpetually green, it has to be recorded, you know.
It is recorded, it's a map, it's a map. It's a map. Listen, whatever it is.
But you have the same lot number on both the lots. You have to have a different lot number, wouldn't you?
No, it's all, it's all one new, that, it's, it's like, that whole piece, the whole L shape is one big lot. And the green part is, is an easement on the school lot, which is one.
What you're saying, take that easement and make that a lot.
I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't understand that.
I didn't either, but it's an interesting idea.
Financing, it wouldn't help your financing, Mr. Penzer.
This will have, this should not have.
The wanted part of this, right?
With that noted, it makes the green area a lot.
You could make it a separate lot, but what the deed restriction would say in it, it would, it would go to the, you know, this actual chain of title, and it would say, this is subject to a restriction, that the area, according to this meets and bounds description, you know, running north oh seven degrees, forty-seven minutes, forty seconds west for two hundred and two feet, deed restriction.
Or you could say lot so-and-so within dimensions.
You, you could say lot so-and-so, but.
That, that way, even I could understand.
A meets and, you do both. You do meets and bounds, and you do it by lot and block, and you do it by street address. And then you also say, in accordance with Exhibit A, attached here, too, the green area, but the deed restriction would have to lay out what the deed restriction is, and it would say pursuant to a resolution of the Lakewood Planning Board, February 7th, 2017, wherein the board restricted this area for, must remain as green space, and it must be accessible for the, for the owners of lot 190.03, lot 190.02, and lot 190.01. It has to be a deed instrument that gets recorded with the registrar of deeds. Otherwise, it's not enforceable, because what happens, when these people buy their property on Joe Parker Road, they, when they get their title searched, they don't know that they have the rights to that.
John, to make, I got more advisors than Trump does. My opinion is, you want a deed, you got a deed. I think you're screwing the school, but I'm not going to fight about it, okay? I disagree respectfully on the record, and I say for the record, for forty-four years, I've been before this board, we have never, ever done a deed on every site and whatnot. But I, out of respect to you.
I've represented applicants all over this area.
I hereby say you can have the deed, no problem.
And I'll tell you this much, if I'm wrong, I'll call Midstate Abstract tomorrow, I'll talk to them, I'll, I'll do additional research.
You can't undo a deed unfun, it's there. When the appraiser sees it, he sees it. It's like saying you're not pregnant, either you are or you're not.
Whatever John says tomorrow, he said, I'll close.
I hope not. Whatever it is, whatever it is. It doesn't make a difference. Give the deed, it doesn't make sense to argue, let's go.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Any members of the board have any questions on this application? Mr. Greenberg?
Yeah?
Okay.
Diagonal, box of diagonals, is that for a future building?
That's where, that's what, one of the things the board asked for, was, if they're going to build a building in the future, where would it be? We don't know that's the size, we don't know that's the shape, there's no plan for a building right now, they, they do want to build a building in the future, but there's no architectural plan.
You're restricting us up to that area.
It's just an idea of, a school would fit there, that's.
Okay.
The board wanted to know, where is it going to be no building whatsoever?
And that's the green area.
That's what the green is. There will never be green a building on that point, because that's what the board asks. The other part is, is a possibility. We don't know, yes, but yes, it could be. But the green will never be a building. That could be restricted any way you wish.
You have enough parking on the, on the side of the school?
We, the parking that's there is for the school, the school was approved with the parking that's there. We're not proposing a new building, we're not proposing any parking, we're not proposing anything at this time. Someday, they'll be back.
You have to come back to the board anyway.
Someday, if there's going to be a, a school there, a new school building, we will be back with a site plan, yes.
And showing the parking and everything.
Correct. That, that box is just.
Just to leave you an area where you could build.
Where we're probably going to build this school.
No problem.
As part of that land, you're going to seek the appropriate waivers as it relates to the parking services and everything else.
We're not proposing anything.
I'm talking about the overflow, where you were discussing gravel. We don't need to talk about it tonight, Glenn.
Okay.
At the site plan, if there's a waiver needed, we'll deal with it then.
Yes, definitely.
Any other board members have any questions? Okay, we'll close it. Anybody from the public would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Please state your name, you have to be, you have to be sworn in.
I'm over here now.
Oh, you're right.
This ball must you swear from testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, Jerry Ballwens, 208 Governors Road.
Okay, please proceed.
I was interested in listening to the arguments between the two attorneys, and I would hope that the board will seriously consider their, their attorney's advice, and that his experience, that in the past, he's had to litigate in other towns. Just because something has been done in Lakewood a certain way, doesn't mean it's always been the right way. So I would hope that if there has to be a deed restriction versus a map, that the board insists that there be the deed restriction on this property.
Thank you. Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Noreen Gill, 192 Coventry Drive, Lakewood.
You swear from testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed.
I know we're arguing over this grass, or whatever this lot is.
Open area.
Open area. This has come before, the planning board before, where many schools were built, and there was always an area that was left open, so that, as it was stated, that in the future, if we do any building, we could come back. In the meantime, with the situation, if in the future, we come back, and if there's any more building, there's not enough room for parking. I'll give you a prime example. There's a shore, Coventry Shore. They're on their second building phase out again, okay? They were given approval for twenty-two parking spaces, and the first time they built, okay, it was a, a home, then they built the shore. They said, we may come back in the future. Well, this is the second time that they're coming back. They were approved for twenty-two spaces. Five years ago, there were fifty cars parked on both sides of Kennedy Boulevard, twenty-two spaces in their parking lot. Now we're in the second build-out, where the people going to park? I'm afraid, unless this is designated or de-restricted, that this is what we're facing. I don't care if Mohammed comes down from the mountain, I want to make sure that the people in the area know what's going to happen. I don't want to drive down another street and have fifty cars on both sides and I can't get by. I think this has got to be, I think Johnny Jackson has, has a, a record here, and I think you really should listen to your lawyer.
Thank you. You're next. Please state your name, you have to be affirmed then.
Mechle Rotblatt, 1540 Long Beach Avenue.
Okay, please raise your hand.
You swear from testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes, I affirm.
Sir, can you explain your name?
Mechle, M-E-C-H-L-E, Rotblatt, R-O-T-B-L-A-T. I just have a few questions about the lot. First thing is, this thing is bordering the farm, which is zone environmental, and there is a lot of spraying pesticides there, so it would not be surprised if a lot of the properties nearby are in what's called, full of pesticides. At least on my property, I wouldn't be surprised. It gets pretty close. Another thing is, park, if it ever goes for parking, parking would contaminate the farmland. Another question I have is like, coming nine o'clock in the morning, the place does get pretty busy, you have now four cars coming out of these lots, you're going to have twelve cars, nine o'clock in the morning, I don't know where they're going, there's a school on each side of these lots. Only questions I've had, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hobbday, please state your name.
I do. Bill Hobbday, 30 Schoolhouse Lane.
Raise your right hand, please swear from testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name is I do.
Bill Hobbday, 30 Schoolhouse Lane.
Yeah.
The last time applicant was here, they were going to go away and clarify everything, very specifically where the parking spaces were going to be, where the lines were going to be, and it was clear to me at that time, that if paving is required for parking spaces, that that would have been defined.
I think, Mr. Hobbday, they don't need any parking spaces, we just wanted the open area.
I understand that, but they were supposed to do two things, because the last time they didn't define that, they were going to do that, and they were going to draw very specific areas where they were going to do things, where they were going to place the building.
Mr. Hobbday, with all due respect, I thought last time, that the concern was, there was no delineation of what was going to be green and open, and I think that here, they've done that.
Right.
Well, I don't know that they have done it. Okay, you know, that wasn't distributed to the, to the public.
So this green area will remain green and open, there'll be access to the three lots, and it'll actually be not only in the recorded documents, but also deed restriction.
Well, Mr., Mr. Jackson, I think your own words were, I, I also believe that a deed restriction is required on the deed, that when you pull that deed, you see the restriction right there. Attachments like maps and things like that are not always found in your initial search. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to be heard? Singong, we'll close it to the public. We have a motion on this application?
Slow move.
Okay, we have a motion on a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Gruber.
Motion to approve, yes.
Yes. Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hiberson.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Fulman.
Yes.
Mrs. Sibberabellus, yes.
On behalf of the school, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, number two.
Um, Mr. Landrieff, I'm told that item number two SP, two, two, two.
Two, 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 two.
Sol Gray is carrying, is there anyone here on Sol Gray's application? Thank you. In the meantime, I'm sending my phone forward with the, item number three SP, one, two, twenty-three, made by TMV70 LLC. It is listed under public hearing, just because the agenda is getting pretty cramped, because this is a concept review. You can certainly take comments with the public if you're interested, but this is not a legally noted public hearing. They will be coming back to the math page after they get all these comments on this conference.
Hey, Terry. Okay, no problem. Okay. Okay, what's your?
We have to get some more in.
No, it's a concept, you have to, no, just state your name, please.
Yes, good evening. Kirk Russum from the law offices of Appicelli, Costanzo, and Russum, and Tom River. I also have John Ray here from McDonough and Ray and Associates. Our office represents TMV70 LLC, they own property at 1255 Route 70, corner of Route 70 and Airport Road. As a bit of background, the property is located in the B5 zone. The property currently contains a three-story building, forty-one thousand eight hundred fifty-nine square feet of medical office, and a vacant bank building, which is a one-story, twenty-four-hundred-square-foot building. The property also contains an undeveloped pad site, which is the subject of our meeting today. Back in October of two thousand and seven, site plan approval was obtained.
I'm having a very hard time hearing, please.
Sure.
Please speak into the mic.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, speaking.
All right. In October of two thousand and seven, site plan approval was obtained to allow for a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot retail building to be constructed on the undeveloped pad site. Our clients intend to make an amended site plan application to change the seventy-two-hundred-square-foot retail building to a fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot medical office building. We're here in front of the board today for the limited purpose of discussing the required parking variance, which will be included in our client's amended site plan application, and also seeking the board's comments regarding same. Under the development ordinance, medical offices require one space for each one-hundred-and-fifty square feet of gross floor area. And business and professional offices and banks require one space for each three-hundred-square-feet of gross floor area. If you do the math, the bank requires eight parking spaces. And the three-story medical building and proposed fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot medical building will require three-hundred-and-seventy-five parking spaces, making the total number of required parking spaces three-hundred-and-eighty-three. The property currently contains two-hundred-and-thirty-six parking spaces. With restriping, which we are able to do, which we will do, the total number of parking spaces will be increased to two-hundred-and-fifty-three. Since the property will have two-hundred-and-fifty-three total parking spaces, the parking variance will be required for a hundred-and-thirty parking spaces.
Is this the right... It says on this plan that you have three-sixty-two onsite parking spaces, required, three-sixty-two.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, what do you...
It says total parking space required onsite, three-sixty-two.
Actually, I have three-sixty-four in the application form. So, it's somewhere about right.
Okay.
You're not gonna provide that much, Terry.
Three-sixty-three. Yes. Somewhere between three-sixty-two and three-sixty-five.
Okay, so...
We'll pin the number down when we come back for site plan.
Basically, you need about three-sixty, and you're giving...
Two-fifty-three.
So, you have...
We're going to provide two-fifty-three.
So, you're short over about a hundred-and-ten parking spaces?
Approximately.
Hundred-and-five.
And we'll confirm that amount when we come back in for the amended site plan application.
That's a big number.
I have with me John Ray from McDonough and Ray and Associates. He's prepared a traffic and parking analysis, which indicates that there will be adequate parking at the site. I will note as well, the traffic and parking analysis that you have in front of you indicates that there will be two-hundred-and-fifty-four total parking spaces. I was notified today by our engineer that there will only be two-hundred-and-fifty-three. So, we will amend the traffic and parking analysis as required when we come back in for the amended site plan application. But I wanna have Mr. Ray touch on the adequacy of the parking spaces.
I have a question. You have existing right now two-thirty-six.
Yes.
And you're adding another fourteen-thousand-square-feet building, and we're just gonna put up another...
Building without any more parking?
With twenty parking spaces or fifteen parking spaces, that's it, for that whole building?
With restriping, we're adding seventeen new parking spots for a total of...
Fourteen thousand? Fourteen thousand square feet?
We're adding...
Correct, correct.
Mr. Ray?
Okay, so essentially, what we did was, we went out and we did parking counts. They're described in the report that's been prepared dated December twenty-seventh, twenty-sixteen. We did two full days of parking counts on weekdays when the medical office space in the existing building will be at a maximum. The counts were done on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, and Tuesday, November first. We were out there for the whole day on those two days doing parking counts. And what we found was that the maximum parking accumulation occurred at eleven-fifteen a.m. on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, with a total of a hundred-and-fifty-eight cars parked within the parking lot for the existing three-story, a little bit less than forty-two-thousand-square-foot medical office building. What we did was, we also went in, we examined whether there were any vacancies in the building, and there was one small vacancy of twelve-hundred square feet. We factored that into our analysis. And when we calculated the parking ratio, the peak parking ratio that is currently being experienced by that medical office building, it comes out to three-point-seven-seven parked vehicles per thousand square feet. What we then did was, we went to the new plan that's being proposed, and it's two-hundred-and-fifty-three spaces. We're adding fourteen-thousand-four-hundred square feet. And what we did was, we did several calculations. Number one, the first thing we did was, we calculated how much parking would be generated by the additional fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot building if it generated its peak parking at the same rate as the bigger forty-one-thousand-square-foot building. And if that were to be the case, which I think is a pretty logical and reasonable way to approach it, we come up with a peak parking demand following the expansion with the fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot new building of two-hundred-and-twenty parked vehicles, being what we anticipate would be our maximum demand. We're gonna have two-fifty-three, so that test, if you will, is passed. The second thing I did was, I took a look at the fourteen-thousand-four-hundred square feet of new office space that's being proposed. And if you look at the number of spaces that we're proposing, two-fifty-three, the peak that we're currently experiencing at a hundred-and-fifty-eight, essentially, we're providing ninety-five parking spaces for that new fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot expansion. And if you run the numbers, I believe they do, that ratio of the ninety-five available parking spaces for the new expanded building will meet the township's zoning requirement of one space per every one-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So, that's another calculation I did. And lastly, what I did was, I went into the National Standards, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and I looked at the Parking Generation Manual that we, as traffic engineers, rely on in order to project how much parking will be generated by these types of buildings. And if you look at the ITE numbers, the eighty-fifth percentile peak parking ratio for a medical office building is four-point-two-seven parking spaces per thousand square feet. If you run those numbers, we would need two-hundred-and-forty-eight parking spaces. We're gonna have two-fifty-three. So, I kinda looked at it from three different scenarios, and I found that each test was passed. And so, my conclusion was that if you approve the expanded medical office space and give us the fourteen-thousand-four-hundred square feet, I have no doubt that we will have adequate parking within that two-hundred-and-fifty-three space parking lot.
You know, if somebody moves out, another doctor comes in, which is more busy, and you don't have enough parking spaces.
Well, that's...
I personally...
I understand.
I personally think that even when you're deficient over a hundred parking spaces, it's a lot. It's a lot.
Mr. Ray, in that... I'm sorry, it was Mr. Ray, right?
Yes.
In the...
Mr. Kellum's on vacation, so you got the B-team tonight.
In the last calculation, you said that you ran with the state standards, wasn't it?
The ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Was that for medical office uses or just office uses?
Medical office, the higher...
You said four-point-two-five per one-thousand.
Per thousand square.
You know, even just for number sake, you know, maybe two-hundred-and-fifty, one per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. In our order, it's one per one-fifty.
Right.
So, do you find that our ordinance is typically very stringent compared to those standards?
It's a little bit higher than a typical standard. I think most of the towns that I've appeared in over the years, in over two-hundred-and-fifty towns, the most common parking ratio for medical office space is one per two-hundred or five per thousand. That's a very common ratio. So, the Lakewood ordinance is a little bit on the high side. That's why we're asking for variance. More sick people in Lakewood? I don't believe that.
Through the chair, I just... I would like to say that we basically never ran any parking variances, because we feel strongly that the parking requirements in Lakewood are not strong enough. That would be more parking.
Definitely not a hundred parking spaces.
If you're short a few parking spaces, it's one thing, but to be short a hundred parking spaces, as much as you'd like to see commercial development along the seven, because it's a great place for it, for me, it's a not-starter.
All I can do is count cars and try to present a logical argument, but I understand.
This two-thousand-and-seven approval is still a valid approval? This...
Correct. Yeah, still valid, correct.
We still have an approval for a seven-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot retail building.
And what we're doing is replacing...
Does an approval ever go away, that you cannot build it? After how many years?
I believe, John, you may be able to confirm, I believe this site plan approval is generally good for five years to protect against zoning changes.
Yes. And then you can get a couple of extensions. The permanent extension act has been in play for so long, I forget the...
But the...
But I think essentially, unless the zone didn't change, it's no longer about...
It's good for...
It's no longer for me to use, it's kind of good for it.
The site plan approval is good in...
Ray? Unless the zone changes.
Yes.
So, what it really does, it gives you protection against zoning changes.
If we go with the seven-thousand-square-foot building, what's your variance on the parking?
That I haven't worked those numbers out.
I think you got to ask for a variance, I'm sure, on that.
Well, that's already approved, so.
I understand.
I don't know what the requirement is, because I wasn't asked to look at that, because it's already approved.
Question?
Yeah, of course.
The current existing buildings, are they fully occupied?
There's one small vacancy of twelve-hundred square feet in the forty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot building.
The bank?
The bank is not occupied. But that's been factored in the eight parking spaces that we need for the bank.
Eight parking spaces for the bank?
Excuse me?
You're saying eight.
That's what your ordinance requires. Quite frankly, I...
So, that's off, and you're saying the office and the doctors is off. You need way more than eight, so ordinance might be off with the bank.
The bank is twenty-four-hundred square feet.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, eight parking spots?
Right.
You just tell us and managers in a bank, you got twelve.
It meets the ordinance requirements.
Some of your ordinance requirements are a little bit on the light side, some are a little bit on the heavy side. I understand what you're saying.
Question and a recommendation, if I could. You hear the board's concerns.
Yes.
They're going to want to approve if you come back with the site plan relative to what you were asking for. Per my review of the documents, the existing use is predominantly medical office at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Recommendation, in addition to your typical traffic study, would it be worthwhile perhaps to do a parking study of your facility? Do you have a real-time example? I've got X-thousand-square-feet of medical office space if I do counts over a period of day, such and such. What does that translate into on this property for what you have now?
I carry respectfully, I... They're lacking a hundred parking spaces. And the last thing I want now is for every applicant to come back before the board.
Now, I stay in the running for approval.
No, no, respectfully, I... Again, my opinion respectfully, the last thing I want is for every applicant to come back before the board to do individual traffic studies and traffic tests. We have our ordinance, parking ordinance. You're shorting these spaces, it's one thing, you're short a hundred spaces.
The ordinance is there for a reason.
And respectfully, guys, I appreciate that, but why move forward? It's just a not-starter.
Exactly.
And we respect it, I just want to move forward.
Okay. Any other comments from any of the board members?
I think...
I'm gonna go out on a limb and assume that if they were to submit for their amended site plan, you would be too keen to do the five players view and public hearing.
I just think it's a waste of time. Why waste everybody's time?
I don't think you're taking too big of a risk, Alan.
I think you approved for the seven-thousand, which I think you also took a variance in it, too.
You want seven-thousand, we should lock your...
Thank you. I have a quick just note regarding the... And this is assuming we come back with the amended site plan application regarding Remington and Vernix review comments regarding number three indicating that the Shade Tree Commission requested landscaping plan. I was discussing that with the engineer, O'Donnell Stan, and indicated that we would be requesting a waiver of that, simply because there will be no new landscaping proposed. Simply structure, sidewalk and curb, no new landscaping of anything, and it's all gonna stay the same.
You make your case as with all the other relief.
Sure.
The board, obviously, is gonna have their own opinion. They're gonna take in, including the Shade Tree Commission as part of their decision.
As long as you bring it up at the public hearing.
Sure.
Because if you do not mention it, then, Terry, the letter gets incorporated into the resolution, and it says all comments, you have to comply.
And if you haven't identified the relief, it doesn't...
So, if you don't say, "We are not complying with item four, we're asking the board to waive that," then it will not get waived, so you just make sure it's mentioned.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, back to number two. Yes.
I'm sorry, can I bring up one more item?
Yes.
Comment. Just for purposes of discussion, seventy-two-hundred-square-feet building for retail requires twenty-four-hundred... I'm sorry, twenty-four parking spaces, with the math per my calculator. For a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot medical building, it requires forty-eight spaces. Taking out the twenty-four from the three-eighty-three. Apologies, as I do this on the fly. Is there twenty-four space difference? Okay, so... Excuse me. Okay. If we convert the seventy-two-hundred-square-foot retail building to medical, it's a difference of twenty-four spaces.
What are you approved right now for?
Retail.
Retail.
And that's included in what we're approved for.
And medical needs more than retail?
It does.
It does, because people are in the...
Sure.
People are there.
If we indicate a change to medical for that purpose, are the board's comments still the same?
My comments are the same. I don't know about the board.
The question, at least for me, would be, what, how much of a parking variance was granted for that retail building that you'll be in place of by twenty-four spaces?
There was no variance.
It was conforming.
And it was conforming altogether with the seventy-two-hundred-square-foot retail. And changing that to medical would require a difference of twenty-four.
So, it's been four parking spaces that goes to...
However, we're adding seventeen to what we currently have.
You're short a hundred, how is it four? You're only short twenty-four.
Well, that's only if we change the seventy-two-hundred-square-foot retail to medical. Right now, in our current concept plan application, we're proposing to get rid of the seventy-two-hundred-square-foot retail building, and in its place, construct a fourteen-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot medical building. Parking spots being much greater.
I would tend to think that with the seventeen that you're proposing and the deficiency of twenty-four, the need for these guys to have the spaces, that's a little more reasonable.
How are you adding seventeen?
By restriping. We currently have two-hundred and... Apologies, we currently have two-hundred-and-thirty-six parking spots. We're gonna restripe and make two-hundred-and-fifty-three parking spots. So, we're gonna add seventeen. The difference between the seventy-two-hundred-square-foot retail, we change it to medical, is a difference of twenty-four spots. So, if we're adding seventeen spots, if in the event we only come in with an amended site plan application to change the seventy-two-hundred-square-foot building, keep it the same square foot, change it to medical, then we'd be requesting a six-to-seven parking spot, parking space variance.
Are those spots that you're adding, they're in the back, by that back building, right? There's a...
I'd have to...
I know the site.
Sure. I'd have to review the plan by the engineer, I'm not exactly sure whether it being added.
My concern is, this is a building, and I understand that we have two doctors in that building, I work on Airport Road. The parking's not great. It's not horrendous, but I am, probably this with an experience of knowing that it's not great. Like, when I go, there's one spot. So, I am concerned about the variance for parking.
It's not horrendous now, but it's gonna be horrendous.
Yeah, it's gonna be bad.
And at both the calculations for, even at the seventy-two-hundred, even changing that to medical, your comment is still the same about that? Even for a six-to-seven spot, parking space variance?
My... I guess my concern is, you know, with the voting comes, whether it was retail or medical, already a bit of concern, I understand it's prior approval, but I am concerned that with giving a variance, I don't see that it's going to be beneficial. The benefit is not outweighed, that's for sure. I find it interesting that you've had issues with the parking lot consistently in comparison to what the traffic expert got, with those dates or anything like that. But his total count, he said of the mass of the site being used was like a hundred-and-fifty-eight space, which is definitely in contrast to what you're saying you find. And I was wondering consistently, I'm personally, there was a lot of PIs, there was physical therapy, so it was usually, it wasn't just a one-on-one thing, so I'm...
So, the board has their own parking.
Okay.
Which is really bad.
Okay.
She never ran out parking variances.
Not that much. One or two, you're short is one thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, number two, Sol Gray.
Two S.P. twenty-two-twenty-two A.A. for Sol Gray. There's kind of a question to you having that. I was gonna say, you were gone again. I don't know if you have a reason for the board or...
Well, Terry's report indicated that it's really not ready, so we wanna get the information, comply with Terry's report, and come back when it's ready.
Did you go to the tech meeting today?
I wasn't on the tech.
I wasn't on the tech.
I was submitted for exemption before we implemented the...
But somebody told me today, it was by the tech meeting, it was great.
Tech meeting was great?
Yeah.
Let's carry this application, and then I wanna ask the board a question about the tech meeting before we...
Okay.
February twenty-first, or are you looking for later?
I think we go to the March meeting.
March twenty-first?
Yeah.
March twenty-first?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to know if I would ever vary.
Yes.
Is it a Wednesday, Alex? March twenty-first is a Wednesday?
No, I don't think so.
No, because February is... February is a Wednesday, and it should be the same, because...
I thought there was one meeting on Wednesday.
There is one on a Wednesday, it's not March.
There is, but not this month.
That's quite right. Yeah, I'll move it to the...
You have a second?
March twenty-first.[1732.78]
Yes, a second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Grantford?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris, Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Renner is...
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Paulman?
Yes.
Mr. Gratham?
Yes.
Mr. Tiller? Just real quick while we're on the subject of tech meetings, now that we're doing the tech meetings at 1:00 with the board, for these change of use site plan exemptions where you're taking a house and referring it either to a school or a house of worship, in the past we didn't require a tech meeting, we went straight to public hearing. Are we sticking with that procedure? Send everybody...
Let them go to a tech meeting.
Yeah.
That's what I would, I would think, but I, in the instance when I'm going to start getting pushback, I'm going to say, no, the board said everybody goes to...
Send them to Yochiel, Yochiel will take care of it.
We would like to have come up to the board as clear as possible, parking sidewalks, whatever we take here.
Parking on Athens?
Yeah.
Time to call Yochiel.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, public portion, Mr. Klein.
Let's run somebody over.
Okay.
First of all, is the attorney on Oak Street corridor that the guys approved before a few lots over there. Your attorney...
One second. Do you have to be sworn in?
No.
Doesn't have to be sworn in. Okay.
But I could give my name if you want.
So state your name and address.
Address, I don't have to, even by application, that's the law. I'm L U L.
Where are you sitting at?
So it's, um...
State your name.
My name is Lloyd McLean. And you just realized that the township engineer was trying to be happy that I just lost a few seconds of my speaking. And just see how it's working over here, the trying and who is trying to shut down the public.
Let's be quiet. The engineering department.
Now, it's like this, it's not your time to speak now, you had your time. You're not a member of the public.
We'll put back 10 seconds.
So in the township, the attorney was talking about waiver of curb and sidewalks. What he forgot is that there's a U D O law passed in 2015 that might not ring in his correction, that every time an applicant comes, he has to develop the roads. We're not talking about curb and sidewalks. And for this applicant not to develop it, he had to ask for a waiver. So he was coming over here saying is, he doesn't have to develop the road, he's not required to develop the road, and therefore is, there's no reason of curb and sidewalks, and it makes sense to put it where it was. But respectfully, the township engineer overlooked a U D O, and I'll quote it, is this 20 dash 1, please be quiet, township engineer, planning board engineer, whoever you want to call yourself, Terry, whatever your name is.
Planning board engineer?
Um, point 16. And the ordinance is 99-11 subsection 15. I would request from the chairman to put, ask the engineer to just know where his place is.
Mr. Klein?
Yes?
I just suggest that you give some respect, you'll get back respect, vice versa. The comments, they really undermine the credibility of what you're saying, and you're kind of provoking this. Just be respectful. We'll be respectful to you. You please respect the process and respect the people sitting on it. We're just trying to do our best.
I'm trying to respect the process when the process will accept, respect itself.
Well, it's Klein. Just because you don't agree with it doesn't mean that it's...
And I'm respectfully saying that I'm disagreeing you, and I'm getting interrupted by your engineer while I'm trying to talk.
Just continue, just continue.
Okay, now, as far as the Oak Street corridor goes, when you are misled, when they came for this application, they were told, that you were told, the, the planning board was told, that there will be no waivers, you have to approve it anyways, it's a buy right application, that you cannot ask them to prove any roads, and whatever. And now it comes out that if you wouldn't have passed that ordinance, and you recommended in just John Franklin, corant, corant, with just by the end, in asking that it should come back to the board because you realize something is fishy, and tonight you just realized it by the rehabilitation ordinance, and you're getting on track. But when, if you, if you wouldn't have passed this, they would have come to the board and asked for this waivers to not improve that road. That is the only road that goes north to south across Oak Street corridor, that development. All other ones get interrupted in the middle. This is the only one that gets connected. And if you wouldn't have passed that ordinance, you would have been able to tell the developer, go improve that road. Go put in sidewalks like you're required to. And the fact that you, it, and it's Ellie Morris, actually, that put it in, and it says on top of the, the engineer statement, Ellie Morris says that there will be, there is little or no room for the board to ask for changes to the plan anyway.
Finish off first.
It should be noted that any application that requires variance or waivers, however, would still be required to obtain conventional subdivision approval before the entire planning board and legally notice to the public hearing. So Ellie Morris was telling you guys, this application, and then there's a, there is a note from Terry, now Terry, now we'll get shut down because of mentioning the word Terry, but what? Definitely will.
Be respectful.
In Terry's report, it says that, he's lucky, I'm not finding it. Actually, I did. It says in his report, "It is our opinion that the easification of these right of ways will reduce intersection, intersections and traffic conflict along the remaining neighborhood streets, resulting in enhanced traffic safety. When development occurs in the future, multipurpose easement are being retained to provide for linear pedestrian access." First of all is, there was no easement done. But the other thing is, he says that by eliminating this road from north to south, the only one, will increase safety of traffic and, 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 and for, for, I'm just...
That's true.
But, but that, okay. So basically, what I'm trying to bring out, if this is the only road that's going to north to south, how does an engineer put this in an airport? And you guys, I believe, if, if you would have had this public hearing regular, and you would, would let the public speak, and you would have had a regular public hearing on this, you would, the public could have made this common, and I'm sure John Franklin would have never allowed this. And this is what he was trying to eliminate with asking to come into the public. And when this ordinance, when this resolution was passed by this, when actually the chairman made the motion that it should come to the whole board, and actually the active chairman at the time was Justin, he says the public will be able to speak. And actually, in the previous application, the public was allowed to speak and pointed out that on two of the rows, there was no sidewalks. And the applicant agreed by the recommendation of the board to put in sidewalks. So with eliminating the public to speak on such a high density development, is basically if it wouldn't have been last meeting that I would have spoken up against the sidewalks not putting in, sidewalks would have not been put in, and children might have gotten killed, or adults might have gotten killed. And John Jackson wouldn't have come to the funeral because he would have stayed in Jackson or wherever he lives. So the fact is that he's not letting the public...
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
What? The fact that he's not, I'm finishing up. The fact that he's not allowing the public in his, in trying to eliminate the public speak over the recommendation of the board is, is, is basically trying to help out, again, I assume it's the township engineer for messing this up, or he's trying to protect the developers, or he's trying to do something else. But I highly respectfully ask that he should reconsider his opinion that this part of this, or all of them, tonight that was passed, was illegally passed because he overlooked the law, the U D O of past of 2015. The developers are required to put in the roads, and they didn't put it in.
Okay, thank you. And you want to respond?
I'm not prepared.
Okay, next.
Jerry Ballwans, Governor's Road. This afternoon, I went onto the planning board website, and I couldn't understand why there were two listings for two planning board agendas, one for the plan review, and then one for the, the public hearings. So when I finally clicked on it, of course, it came up 1 o'clock is the plan review meeting. And I'm wondering, is this now going to be the procedure for all of the meetings, that all plan review items are going to be held at like 1 o'clock on a Tuesday?
Can I just respond?
Yeah, sure.
What's happening, people, the public notice people to come here for the plan review and the public hearing. We used to just have a strict plan review and a strict public hearing, and then they started blending. But what was happening is people were coming here thinking it was their public hearing, because that's what their notice said. Then they get frustrated because they sit here for the plan review...
Right, I know.
Not be able to say a word, then have to come back again. A lot of other towns have a plan review process or a technical review committee meeting, that's between the engineers and the attorneys, and of course, the clients come in. And we look over the plans to make sure that everything is ready for the board. It's not necessary to do that in public, and it's not necessary to notice. So we, in order to try to serve the public better, lower the amount of frustration, give the board more quality time to handle applications. We have the plan review process. We had the first one today, I think it went pretty well. I wasn't here, another attorney in my office was. And, and people were told what revisions they were, they had to make, and now when they come back, it'll just be the public hearing. So...
It's going to be a more complete plan.
It'll be a more complete plan. So we have our marching orders from the board to make sure the revisions are made, or tree safe plans, whatever. So hopefully it'll streamline the process, and we're doing it to serve the public better.
Okay, because I know, having been an attendant at many meetings in the past several decades of my life, living in Lakewood, people would come and they would be frustrated that they thought they could speak at the plan review, and then were told, no, you have to come back. So I guess that could streamline it. But then in the meantime, that means that the neighbors of these applications will not be notified until they're, after this meeting, and then a date has been set.
And the board's not at this meeting either. So it's just a matter to make sure that the application's ready to be presented to the board, then the board will get it at, at the public hearing.
And then that's when the neighbors will be, get their notice.
That's when the neighbors get to give their input, ask questions, et cetera.
Okay. Does that mean at any of this meeting that there will not be a public hearing? Because sometimes this, different applicants or schools would say, can we...
It has to be a public hearing.
Has to be a public hearing.
Legally.
So then it would just be purely plan review. Okay, thank you.
No action to be taken at that meeting, other than get it ready for the planning.
Now, the public can't attend this?
Yes. We, that's very unusual.
Because that'll be at 1 o'clock.
It's very unusual to have the public there. The public cannot participate, and I know Mr. Klein would like that. No, I didn't say that.
You don't, you don't really have to attend, Mr. Klein put the video.
I'm videoing it so you can watch it online, I guess.
Alrighty, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next. Please state your name.
Aaron Hirsch.
Aaron Hirsch?
Aaron.
Okay. Need his address?
Okay, so the reason why I want Aaron Hirsch, A R O N H I R S C H. Reason why I'm coming up here tonight is because I found something that's, I feel the planning board is supposed to be planning for the future of this town. Now, we have to do things in a smart way. I brought this up at the committee meeting, the mayor agreed with me, he spoke to me afterwards, and he said he agreed with this. But you guys really have to make that decision. Obviously, you all know, and everyone in this town is going crazy over traffic, 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 traffic. You guys, the planning, not you, I'm sorry, the planning board in the past has always let a applicant to bring in their own traffic study. It's like telling the applicant, the township does not need an attorney, you bring in an attorney and tell us what to do. This is insane. I was saw yesterday on a mid-winter vacation day, someone counting cars at one of the corners in Lakewood doing a traffic study, on mid-winter. This is insane. You guys need to hire an outside firm, enough with this guy that makes up whatever these guys want to do. There was even, I heard there was even one time a study a guy was doing on your Kipper. I mean, this is ridiculous. You guys need to be responsible for this town. You have a responsibility for us, the taxpayers of this town, and we need to be able to have a little, a little, what's going to, a little piece, a little, this traffic has gotten out of control. And it's really not fair to the township. And you see what's going on with this traffic, because all these traffic sites that have been coming up all these years are full of it. Because look what this traffic looks like now. And, and I believe there's, there's a lot more stuff that's coming up at the next meeting. People are furious. You cannot allow, this, this has to change. The mayor agreed with me on this, and he said, you know, he said he doesn't set the rules, but I'm asking you guys to please make changes. Saying, well, you have an attorney here, you need to hire the, the traffic person, and if the applicant wants to dispute it, like he hires, can hire your attorney, he can hire a traffic expert to contradict the township's findings. This is super important, you cannot let this go anymore. Our traffic is going to get, as crazy as it is now, it's just getting worse and worse and worse as developing goes along. And you should make a, a certain requirement over X amount of houses, or whatever that number is, requires a traffic study, because it's going to impact this town.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Chairman, just a, I can...
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Jackson, I'd like to get your input on that, just because we have had some board members also mention that concept, which is, which would be essentially having an applicant paid for a traffic study, but letting the board kind of have either their official traffic expert...
You have to realize what a traffic study does. I mean, the, the DOT relies on licensed engineers and duty to their profession. Accounts are done mechanically, and I've never heard of an instance where a traffic engineer misrepresents counts. The, the study is, can be looked over by our board engineer.
It's a format.
It's like an LSRP, you know, a licensed, like, mediation specialist. The government, it's like when a surveyor goes out and surveys property. We take them at their word because they're licensed and they're, and they're reviewed by the state. So, you know, an engineer, a surveyor, if they misrepresent the counts, then they, they're really jeopardizing their license. So we rely on them, and that's the standard in the industry, the DOT relies on that. And I think to suggest that a licensed traffic engineer that's reputable is going to misrepresent...
I find them coming in front of the board all the time and making, I'd like, I don't know what they're doing. Like I remember one guy came up here, another board, somebody from another board.
Mr. Jackson, we can have different opinions from our engineer and their engineer.
You can review it, you could get an independent one, but then what do traffic counts really do? If they tell you there's 5,000 peak hour on Route 9, it really has to do with designing the intersection, and lights and signaling. That doesn't have...
They can manipulate those findings, like any, like any study.
I'm addressing the boards, I'm sorry, it's not a...
I'm sorry.
... So, so, yeah, you could, you could hire, you know, I'm, I'm sure Terry's office has traffic... Just so the board's aware, we, we have a traffic professional looking at the traffic study that was done for Cedar Bridge Shopping Center now.
What, to make, to make sure that you agree with it?
That's going to be part of our review. And if we have disagreements with the methodology or the findings, we're going to raise it and hopefully work it out between professionals.
I think in the past, part of the problem is that, one, traffic studies have not been required by, by ordinance, by checklist requirements. The town is looking at changing that. And two, because they weren't required, even when applicants have brought a traffic professional to present either a study or testimony, they often didn't do it in advance in enough where Terry's office actually reviewed that information before the public hear. If it's made part of the checklist requirements, Terry will need to have it in time to review along with the plans prior to public hearing.
And that can be discussed at future technicals.
I, I, I think it's very crucial. Sometimes you get a traffic study, and they say it's a C, and I know it's an F. Sometimes you could be standing there 20 minutes to get through. You heard from a lot of people today.
So how do we make it a checklist item? How do we record it?
There is a recommended, there's a list of items that I emailed to the township manager and the township attorney and copied Franz Segal, the zoning board secretary on, saying that, you know, the boards have discussed making these changes to checklist requirements, requiring traffic studies for major site plans...
Right.
And major subdivisions, requiring architectural plans for major subdivisions and major site plans. Right now technically, they're not required for major subdivisions.
Right.
You have to realize what the traffic studies do, too. If you have an intersection that's going out to Route 9 in a subdivision, the state is also going to look at that. If it goes on the county road, county, county routine, and, and they have their own data, it would be very, it would be very difficult to manipulate those traffic counts. Sure, they could take it on a Saturday.
Let's say Pine Street, Cedar Bridge. Is that what? That's a Lakewood road? It's a county road?
Pine Street, Pine Street is a township road.
It's a township road.
Cedar Bridge is...
We're going to hear the 21st. If anybody tells me it's, it's better than an F, you If anybody tells me it's better than an F, you know, I don't believe it.
Our traffic professional is reviewing the plans. He's reviewing the report. I can communicate with him today. We're going to have his recommendations...
On the site visit, could I recommend a time for the site visit?
I'm sorry?
Could we recommend a time for the site visit?
I can communicate with him, sure.
I think we should have a site visit between the hours of, in the morning, AM should be 8:30 to 10:00. Maybe even 8:00.
When all the buses and schools are there.
8:00, yes, I mean, that's when it's...
Remember also what they take from the traffic counts? Because that's just how long the acceleration lane is, how many cars can queue up, what they expect to make a left, how much time it's going to take. It's really not going to say whether or not you approve something. It really has to do with the design of the intersection. Correctly, I want, Terry, to do, a traffic count really generally doesn't have a direct bearing on...
I'm going to go first because it's going to come up. Let's say if we fly down, and now let's say the worst case, we feel this is a level of service E or level of service F, which are bad.
Explain what that means.
Level of service E or level of service F. Some of the worst conditions, the longer delays.
It goes from 8:00 to 10:00.
If that comes in front of the board, is that sufficient for the board to turn the application down based upon case law?
Generally, it doesn't... Last, we'll talk about it now. It really doesn't have, it's an off-site condition. You can't tell someone that because they're the last one to develop the property that they can't develop it because there's a lot of traffic in the area. You know, that's up to the government to widen the highways and everything, things grow and evolve, and there's growing pains in the meantime. But that's what I mean...
So what do we have to do?
Put in my concern in adding it as part of an ordinance requirement because realistically, the traffic studies should be used, like you said, to help facilitate better design and not necessarily to say, there's really bad traffic. There's still going to be really bad traffic, let's deny the application. And I just don't want the impression that it's now a checklist item that it should, because I know John has said before that the traffic really can't be used as a base to deny the application.
Let me just go on then. John, if a traffic study comes to that, Pine Street is an F, technically. We still have to approve it if they're not asking any variances?
Well, that has to do with how long you expect the queue to be, whether you need two lanes. Well, I'm not a traffic engineer. I've just picked up a lot of the sort of input. But, you know, how, if you have a drive aisle, how far will the cars stack because the light down the road is going to make the traffic back up? Can you pull out into the road and have enough room? Now, Terry could explain this better to me, but it's really designing of the circulation to make it as best as possible, whether you need lights, whether to put in the subdivision. It really should not affect that. Because the zoning says, you can put this density here. The zoning says you can put a shopping center...
But how can you get there if you don't have the traffic? You don't have the roads getting through.
And if you don't have emergency vehicles access?
Don't.
Our hands are very limited when we...
So then you got to kill people, then?
On an approved application. Yes, Terry.
Well, let's do 8:15 to 10:00.
Wait, I'm sorry, I have like five people talking here.
8:00 to 10:00.
I'm sorry, Jackie, I'm trying to get information.
I know, but...
Okay, so one other time, please.
8:00 to 10:00.
8:00 to 10:00.
8:00 to 10:00 in the morning, and I think the afternoon should be maybe 3:00 to 4:30 would be the right time then.
What difference does it make? John says that we can't consider it.
Well, you can in the design.
I think you want the proper characterization of what conditions.
And, yes, and to look at specifically the intersection of Vine and Pine, where it's, and Washington, and Washington and Pine.
What the board can do is when variances are, you say, we're not going to approve that variance.
There is no variance. They're coming back with no variances.
Then your hands are out of touch because you go to court on a case with no variances.
So why do they come in front of a planning board, then?
Because they have to to make sure there are no variances. Sometimes someone like Mr. Klein will point one out. This group, and you do very often, and you know, I think you do a positive thing, but nobody makes a change. Anyway, I think, yeah, so it gets scrutinized, and you do have some discretion to say, well, we want another roll of evergreens here, we want with the drive aisle to a different location so it doesn't run up to the intersection. You can make reasonable tweaks to the plan, but you can't say you can't have a shopping center here.
But we're the planning board, we're planning for this township. This is not a good plan for the township.
The planning board has a role in adopting the master plan and adopting revisions to the, what do they call it? Periodic revision for the plan.
The master plan reexamine?
The what? The reexamination of the master plan. That's where you take your collective experience and you say, we want to change the zoning over here. We have to, you know, put more stringent zoning requirements. This town has very liberal zoning requirements.
Basically, our hands are tied until they change the ordinance.
Right, and that's, you know, in my view, that's reflective of the political as well.
I know, people come, people come to us and say, how could you approve such things? This is dangerous.
And the township committee keeps on throwing it on the planning board, and they keep on blaming us, so we're...
They changed the zone over there. They've made that zone the zone that they want to have.
It's not just there, they keep on...
But there's also a lot of pressure. Everybody wants their kids to live in town, you know, you have your...
That's why we need shopping centers? They can start living in the park.
You recommend that change.
It's hard to satisfy everyone, and it's a very complicated mix. It's democracy, you know, it's very difficult to reconcile all the competing interests. You know, how in New York City, you come to New York City?
Mr. Jackson, I just hope you're here February 21st.
Terry, can I ask you to communicate with the traffic?
That's exactly what I'm trying to do.
Because I looked at the traffic study, the intersections that they did the counts on didn't go past Washington towards Route 9, and most of the traffic occurs from Washington and on.
Martin Luther King is...
It doesn't make a difference.
Martin Luther's not on there, Mark is not on there.
You backed up for a mile.
And they're not on there at all.
John, didn't you say it doesn't make a difference?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It makes a difference.
I don't think we should be talking about it now.
Okay.
I just wanted to, just one, a few seconds. My point was, with the traffic study, if a person, if a traffic study expert doesn't give results, he won't be hard by anyone. So I disagree with the attorney that he has to follow the law. Same thing with an attorney. If he's not going to give good results, he won't be hard. Then you don't need a township attorney. Then everyone should bring their own attorney in and just tell you guys what the law is and what really is, and goodbye. He doesn't have a job, then.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, I'm not being, no, I'm just trying to be...
No, we need you, John. John, we need you.
I'm not saying that we don't need you. The point was that we do need, just like you're needed, just like you're needed, we need, we need the township council traffic...
Okay, let's go, let's go.
I'll give you an example of what traffic counts can make systems. Somebody has all the traffic going out one entryway, and somebody, traffic books that says because of the level of service, the traffic is going to be backed up, and the cars are going to queue back 35 cars here, and it's going to block the...
Let's split it between...
You have to have two entryways, or you have to put on the side street, or you have to put so many people in. That's really what the traffic does. And that all happens behind the scene because Mr. Boat does that in his analysis and the adjustment of the plan, this sort of professional. That's what those are, pardon? The traffic professional.
Right, right, okay. Okay. Noreen.
Noreen Gil, 192 Penitentiary Drive. I'm here 45 years. I don't know if any of you other than Mr. Franklin is here, lived here any longer.
Justin was.
Okay, here's the problem. We're approving high density, and when the high density goes in, the people that live there can't get out, so they want a traffic light. So, go to the county and the little politics is here and there, and there's $180,000 for a traffic light here. Okay, fine. Three months later, there's another high density going on County Line Road, back to the county, another traffic light. Well, now, even if we made County Line Road one way and Kennedy one way, now we have so many lights that if you make it one way, the cars are stacked, the people can't get out.
It has to be synchronized.
The other thing is, all the side streets down around Clifton Avenue, they're parked on both sides of the street. Fire truck tried to get down, I guess it was in August of this summer, fire truck tried to come down the one street, but because there were cars parked on both sides of the street, he backed out, okay? I witnessed this, and he literally was swearing because what I did, I went around the other side and went down onto Route 88. I was trying to get to Route 88. You have streets here, there's parking on both sides, okay? The streets, we can't get through the streets, okay? An ambulance can't, a fire truck can't. There's a lot of things wrong with this town. When you approve high density, you have to make sure that there's enough parking within that, not that they're going to park in another person's driveway. The traffic study on Kennedy Boulevard years ago was going to be done. That intersection, I pleaded for years, and it's finally fixed, okay? By Wawa, Kennedy Boulevard, it's a four-corner, off of I-95 onto Squankum Road, from the Parkway to Squankum Road, between 5:00 and 7:30 at night. You can't, you can't go anywhere. The only time in my area that you can actually move or drive is after quarter of 10:00 in the morning till 11:30. Then in the afternoon, you can travel from 1:00 until 2:00 because the schools get out, the public schools get out, private schools get out at 4:00 until 6:00. You have buses constantly. We've got a major problem. When you're approving things, you have to make sure that people want to come here and they want to live, okay? But there's such a thing as quality of life, and there's also a thing based on safety when you approve something. So if you're saying you can't use traffic not to approve something, then you better start thinking about the safety and look at the records of the car accidents. I'll give you an example. I called GEICO because my insurance went up, and I said, how come my insurance went up two years in a row? Where do you live? I live off of Kennedy Boulevard in Lakewood. Oh, oh, okay. My daughter moves to Bricktown, $35 less a month. Now she moves to Tom's River, it's $46 a month. So tell me something, are we not paying in many ways for this high density? We can't even drive here. Traffic studies are not done at the right times in the right areas. We need to get a different person to come in here. They use the same person for every application on a traffic study.
Thank you.
Wrong.
Thank you. Mr. Hobbie, make it short and sweet, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sure you've heard all the issues, and you're probably up to about here with them. What I'm going to ask you to do is please be the township's advocate. I know you have a job to do. I know that there are certain things you must do, whether you like to do it or not. The township committee is the legislative branch that creates the laws through the ordinance that puts the teeth into any kind of a plan adopted, master plan adopted by the planning board. The planning board, I heard from Brian Flattery last night, has no power whatsoever. And he didn't say anything because he kept on telling me about what the planning board does and doesn't do, and how long he's waited for this, and how he had to move this application. I mean, the application was to approve, apply for 30 homes where nine were permitted. I mean, that's a little bit of a stretch, so, you know, but he was blaming the planning board.
Mr. Hobbie, I can give you an example of the board just recently turned down an application that was fully conforming, it was five stories, what street was that on, though?
Clifton Avenue.
And I'm on board on that, and I'm having a hard time with that. So there is a responsibility to do what's required, and when you don't, there's consequences.
Well, exactly.
And I think I agree, this board has been got, has become a lot more...
Well, my message to you as the planning board is to have more consultation with the township committee. Let them know your problems. Let them know that you're forced to do some things that you'd rather not do. The master plan committee is in process now, struggling towards developing a new master plan that would be proposed to the planning board. I suggest, when that comes to you, look at it very carefully. Use your judgment. Be sure that what is being recommended here is the best thing for this township. We've all chosen to live here. We, you know, and for the duration, it appears to me with this high-density development that we're killing ourselves. We're not allowing that breadth of freedom in movement that we all thought of when we come to Lakewood. It's gone. It's disappearing more every year. And I had the same message for the zoning board, and I had the message for the planning board. You guys are in charge, and I know you're strapped with things. Talk to this township committee. Look, when you get the master plan, look at it judiciously, make sure that there's nothing in there that's not going to upset the apple cart. And what I mean by that is your quality of life as well as mine. Now, we got a rumor that there's going to be a decision on high-density zoning in the southwest sector. And not a week after that, I saw CAFER request for very high density. It's 936 senior homes with 936 basements. So I got the CAFER report, and this thing where the golf course is, the Eagle Woods Golf Course, the CAFER report showed a building on every inch of that golf course. And I'm saying, there's no room. You can't get out of Augusta Boulevard now with that many additional homes. We're killing ourselves, and we got to stop it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two things I would bring to the board's attention. One is, somebody made a request, and the mayor asked me to just... It's not a question of, oh, we have it seven instead of six. That's one thing I just want to bring to your attention.
The what, that we should change it?
Keep it six. I want to keep six.
Yeah, I don't want to be here till midnight like the zoning board last night.
Keep it six.
Ask me what that's like.
If somebody wanted seven to 10?
I'll just relay that. And the other thing is, everyone got the memo from Mr. Henshaw that the governing body does not want to see variances per side walk.
Like you said, we blame them for the zoning, and then they blame this board for granting waivers and variances, apparently.